Test, 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 test. Test. Test, test, test.
I'm hearing you really well. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. The regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees is now called to order at 9:31 a.m. You may join today's meeting in person or join via Zoom webinar. These links are accessible by visiting the College of the Desert homepage. We will now proceed with the roll call presented by Martinez Garcia. Please proceed with the roll call.
Student trustee James. Trustee Sanchez Fulton. Trustee Meyer.
Present.
Trustee Perez. Trustee Odin.
Here.
Trustee Kinnaman.
Here. At this time, I would like to invite trustee Meyer to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Place your right hand over your heart. Those in the military can salute. Ready, begin.
Thank you, trustee Meyer. Moving on to item 2.01, Board meeting agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.2 subdivision B2, the board may take action on items of business not appearing on the posted agenda upon a determination by two-thirds vote of the board, or if less than two-thirds of the members are present, a unanimous vote of those present, that there is a need to take immediate action and that the need for action came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the agenda being posted as specified. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the agenda for September 19, 2025? All right, seeing none, the agenda stands as presented. Public comments, item 3.01, request to address the Board of Trustees regarding regular agenda items. Remote public participation is allowed and will be accepted in person by email to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu during the meeting and submitted for the record, or by using the Raise Your Hand function by joining the Zoom link. Pursuant to District Administrative Procedure 2345, each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes per topic. Fifteen minutes shall be the maximum time allotment for public speakers on any one subject regardless of the number of speakers at any one board meeting. At the discretion of a majority of the board, these limits may be extended. All comments must be submitted or brought forward prior to the end of the public comments section. As an additional note, this item is intended for members of the public who wish to speak regarding regular agenda items. An opportunity to address the board on matters not related to the agenda will be available during item 15.01 of today's agenda. Jeff, do we have any public comments related to the agenda?
We have a number of public comments submitted in person, a total of five at this point. So the first is from a member of the public, Christina Valenzuela, addressing Agenda Item 4.04.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good morning, President Val Martinez Garcia, Board of Trustees, Vice Presidents, public, and staff. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak to you today. My name is Christina Valenzuela, and I'm your IE Commuter representative here for College of the Desert. I work with your employee transportation coordinator, Patricia Reyes, to support the College of the Desert's rideshare program. You may have seen us at the Fall Flex luncheon where we handed out gift bags to lucky five winners for a raffle prize that we had. We truly appreciate your support in helping improve air quality and improving the environment through the College of the Desert Rideshare Program. This October, IE Commuter is bringing back our Drive Less, Smile More Rideshare Week promotion. While Rideshare Week is officially October 6 through the 10th, we are actually going to be celebrating all month long. By participating and logging your trips, or the employees' trips as well at College of the Desert, you'll be entered into a prize drawing with amazing prizes like two Big Bear Mountain Resort Anytime passes, two-night stay at the Hyatt Regency Indian Wells Resort and Spa, $50 Macy gift cards, Apple AirPods, and so many more. And you can check out our website at iecommuter.org for the list. We encourage all staff, including student workers and tutors, to try carpooling, taking the Sunline bus, biking, walking, or vanpooling during October and beyond. Now that the weather's getting cooler, it's a great time to try it out. Plus, IE Commuter offers so many additional incentives. We also have our $5 a day incentive. We actually just recently got an award for this nationally, so we're really excited about that. Where you can earn up to $125 in gift cards when you rideshare to work at least five days a month for three consecutive months. Vanpool subsidies, you can get up to $600 a month towards a vanpool lease. And one of our favorites, too, experienced MetroLink eligible residents can receive up to 90 days of free MetroLink train tickets. And this can be used for work or leisure, so we do encourage you to share that with your family and friends. We also have a guaranteed ride home, so if you need to leave work unexpectedly and you rideshare in, IE Commuter will cover your ride home. This October, IE Commuter is going to be bringing, oh, so sorry, monthly rideshare. We also have monthly prize drawings. You can participate in the Rideshare Spotlight or our Telework Spotlight for a chance to win even more prizes. And later this morning, Patricia Reyes will share a proclamation about Rideshare Week. I'm so excited about it. And thank you again for your time, and I hope to see many of you join the Rideshare Week fun. Have a great fall semester. Drive less and smile more. And I did bring a few goodies for you guys from IE Commuter. And since it's nice and cool, getting cooler now, hopefully we got you a phone case, for waterproof phone case, and a fan, because it is hot over here sometimes. So thank you so much, everyone.
Our next public comment is from a college staff member, Robert Pirati, addressing item 12.02.
Hello, good morning, board, staff, and student trustee. I'm here to speak on action item 12.02, public employee appointment. I would like to ask that this is pulled to be decided on and discussed at a later date. The information that has come to the parties that involved is very limited, and it has been addressed with human resources asked upon for questioning and concerns from the involved party. And I would like that this is pulled at this date because there's very much lack of information given to the individual. Information was not provided by immediate supervisor, and I do have concerns of change of working conditions for a change of appointment and contract. I thank you for your time. I hope you take consideration to have this held today for a later date. Thank you.
All right, our next public comment is from a student, Sandra Sandoval, addressing item 13.01.
Good morning. I'm a little nervous. My name is Sandra Sandoval, and I'm here today to speak in regards of our safety in India. I'm really happy to have COD as my college in my hometown. And the safety in India is not really good. As you know, we have a lot of homeless people. And I have had a couple incidents when I had classes at night. We would encounter a lot of homeless people during the time we would exit the class. And we would like to, I'm here to advocate for the security officers and for students and our faculty. If there's an opportunity for them to have better gear, if we can have better security, and also if we can have better lighting when we come out of the classes at night, it would be really helpful for us because, as you know, the majority of the students are women, and we don't know how to protect ourselves. But if we have better security, like if the security officers would have their gear, or they would be respected more, it would be helpful for us. That's all. Thank you.
Our next public comment is from a student, Raekwon Rose, addressing item 13.01.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Raekwon, and I'm here to hand over my time to my teacher, Ms. Heather Sanchez.
So our next public comment then is from college faculty Heather Benesh Sanchez, addressing item 13.01.
Good morning. Thank you for letting us come. I'm joined with a number of students from the India campus, and it's my privilege and honor to talk with them and for them. I'm formally asking you to expand the public safety budget specifically in the East Valley. In 2006, I was hired into COD's home. Palm Desert Campus was a bustling, active city. India at the time was already where I lived. In 2008, I addressed this board for the first time. Our healthcare coverage was being threatened, and I had young children, one of whom remains critically ill. And the healthcare for my family was vital. Back then, my world was them, and I didn't often look up. I still live in India today, but a lot has changed. COD in India is not a room in a hidden corner in a building that we don't own. We've become a bustling, active campus of three buildings spanning three blocks. My oldest son is now 31. My youngest daughter is 17. I'm no longer raising a young family, but I am still raising and teaching the youth of the East Valley. Jessie, my student from 2008, is the lead nurse in the India jail. He makes it, by the way, triple what I make, and often jokes that I should quit my job and join him. Dee is my student from 2010. He is the security guard at the Social Security Office on Monroe Street. The pharmacist on Walgreens is my student from 2013. The manager at Texas Steakhouse is my student from 2015. Nolan, who was shot in the head twice and left for dead a block away from College of the Desert in 2017, he and I are still in contact. He can't walk. He's in a wheelchair because of that shooting. But he's a motivational speaker and an advocate for brain injuries. Several of my adjunct colleagues are my former students. My daughter's English teacher last year was my student. And every day, I see them at the grocery store, at Home Depot, and even the gas station. India is my home. The difference between living where you work and commuting in work is that I am responsible to inform my community. They see me. They see me in my pajamas and give me grace, and in return, I give my East Valley students 2,000% of my efforts, time, and presence. Our shared successes are seen, known, and celebrated, but likewise are our dangers and challenges. When things are not as they should be, they come to me for conversation. They see me as the pathway to help keep East Valley COD on track. Today, I am honoring that responsibility. I am asking this board to fully financially support public safety in India to include, but not limited to, better gear, more personnel, locks that work, advanced training, and we could go on. Aside from mass shootings, there have been 385 instances of gunfire on college campuses since 2013, resulting in 81 people, oh, 114 people killed and 312 people injured. Non-gun attacks, and what the Evertown database report calls intentional attacks, have killed 81 persons and injured 192. In response, the CLEARY Act was established by federal law to address serious crime situations which affect directly the safety of college and university campuses. The refusal to inform the public about potential danger is a violation of this CLEARY Act against federal law. When the happenings in India are documented by India employees, specifically public safety, and then they are ignored, deleted, or brushed under the rug by Palm Desert, and then not reported to the campus wide alert, all of COD is put at risk. But I am digressing. India campus needs now a different and new approach to how we deal with our campus safety. But you ask, why should we have something different? We now have three buildings. The CLEARY Act states that crime on campus and on adjacent public land touching public areas are subject to CLEARY Act reporting. What does India campus look like right now? It is situated between the following. There's documented gang activity on King Street. A rehab home is a half a mile away off of Miles Avenue. The county mental health facility is less than a mile south. The county jail is within two blocks walking distance. The weed shop and a liquor store are next to our childcare facility. The park where the messengers stand has become a nighttime hangout for drug use and transients. The alleyway in front of the faculty offices of the childcare center is an open lane use for both drug deals and drug use. An hour before children arrive, you can sit in your car and watch the drug deals happen. Most recently, a homeless man named Raymond was found deceased on a rooftop near a Mexican, or on the Mexican restaurant, and you can see that roof from our second floor window. On the 10th of September, two of my students' lives were threatened in a bathroom. One of them is present today, and that bathroom was in our college campus. The homeless woman was wielding an eight-inch screwdriver and threatened to kill my student. Luckily for them and for us, they were afraid and ran away. It was reported to public safety on the 10th. They then reported it to Palm Desert on the 10th. The alert about this threat was not put out to the public until the 17th, after I started making noise. This is and was clearly a violation of the CLEARY Act. Moreover, that woman who said she would kill my students, shockingly, was not arrested, I believe, due to the direct pressure put on India public safety to keep things easy and not engage. They too are not protected in these cases. Lastly, there's a lot of talk about us being an open campus and that that designation essentially ties our hands. I'd like to refer to Santa Monica Community College, who also has a transient homeless population problem similar to India. They handle transient trespassers by having campus police departments, which we don't have and need, respond to trespassing reports with procedures for removing unauthorized individuals and seeking assistance from the Santa Monica PD when necessary. Their website states that they must balance campus safety with the law, particularly regarding the rights of individuals on public property. But what is public versus private property? Santa Monica Community College has defined public property as being open to the general public, but the access is limited and can be revoked. A person can be considered trespassing if they cannot state a legitimate purpose for being on campus and if they refuse to leave when asked. If they do not have business on the campus, they are trespassing. I urge the board to find the money to create this policy so that we are not welcoming, housing, or entertaining transient violence, drug use, and everything else that comes with it. Trespassing on college property in California is covered by state penal codes. California Penal Code 602, the primary statute for trespassing, covers entering and remaining on someone else's property without permission. COD needs to revoke permission. We are an open campus school. I understand that. But we are for students, and we are for community activities that support students. We are not just for anyone to come and take a shower in our bathroom, to come and use drugs in our bathroom, to come and use our third-floor toilets. That is a working, teaching area. And personally, last year, I had an encounter, or this spring, I had an encounter with a hallucinating drunk man who was on the third floor trying to open up offices, faculty offices. He got caught on the second floor by Daniel, our maintenance man, and he was removed and arrested by the childcare building by one of our other officers. It should have never taken three times. He should have been removed and arrested the first time when he was breaking and entering offices. Thank you.
We have received no other public comment forms for an in-person comment, and at this time, there are no, no one in the Zoom window is asked to speak, and none, no public comments received via email.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Item 4.01, Employee Appointments. President Martinez Garcia, please help us introduce this item.
Yeah, I'd like to call on Acting Director of Human Resource, Employment Relations, Fausto, to present this item for us.
Good morning. Yes, I'd like to be able to announce our employee appointments for the month of August 2025. I'd like to welcome Kyle Kerrigan, Director of Educational Partnerships and Outreach, Katie Chartier, Acting Dean, Counseling Services, Jessica Enders, Interim Dean, Applied Sciences and Business, Neil Lingle, Interim Executive Director, Institutional Advancement, Emmanuel Luna Orozco, Interim Director, Financial Aid, Brandy Stevens, Director, Child Development Center, and Carrie Tate Meyer, Diversity Title IX and Compliance Officer. Thank you and congratulations to all of our newest employees' appointments.
Thank you, Director Fausto. And again, congratulations from the trustees to our newest employees and their new appointments. Item 4.02, Proclamation, National Disciplinities Employment Awareness Month. President Martinez Garcia, could you please help us introduce our reader for this proclamation?
Yes, I'd like to call on VP Phillips to make the introduction.
Thank you. It is my honor to introduce our Director of Disabled Students Programs and Services, Leslie Quinones, who will introduce our student.
Good morning. It is my honor to introduce to you Felipe Saldivar. Felipe has been enrolled at College of the Desert since 2022. She's been an active member of the Makerspace Club for over a year, is a former Trio DSPS student, and receives ongoing support from DSPS Trio Ace, from DSPS and Trio Aces. Felipe currently works in the food pantry at the Basic Needs Center, where she assists students facing challenges related to food and resource insecurity. She is pursuing an associate's degree in early childhood education. She aims to make a difference in the community by opening a nonprofit daycare that will serve and support low-income families in the Coachella Valley. Please join me in welcoming Felipe Saldivar.
Good morning. My name is Felipe Saldivar.
My name is Filippa Saldivar. I am going to be reading the proclamation for DSPS today. Where, whereas in nineteen ninety-one, President Bush signed into the law, into law, the Americans with Disability Act to promote and protect the rights of American citizens with disabilities, establishing a national mandate to end discrimination and whereas the Civil Rights Law applies to the sixty-one million Americans with disabilities compressing, comprising the largest single mandatory group in the United States. Whereas eligibility to the group as disabled is inclusive and transcends issues of race, ethnicity, age, gender, and economic status. Are all eligible. And whereas can contribute con- contributions made to society's civilization and the whole of American experience by individuals with disabilities should be acknowledged and celebrated for the benefits and the betterment of all. And whereas the proposal of National Disability Awareness Month is the enlightenment of the of all Americans to the ability of the individual and the inclusion of the needs of its citizens, issues of equity, access, education, and employment. And be it further resolved, the that Desert Community College District declares and affirms the month of October as National Disability Awareness Month and celebrates the lives and contrib- contributions that made by individuals with disabilities to promote and light individ- of individuals' abilities.
And thank you, Filippa and Leslie. Item four point oh three, National Hispanic Heritage Month. President Martinez Garcia, could you please help us introduce our reader for this proclamation?
Yes, this time I'd like to call on VP Cowan, Cowden, to make the introduction.
Okay. So please, Dean Pappas, if you could introduce Associate Professor Spanish, Martha Torres
Good morning, Board Chair Kinnaman, President Martinez Garcia, esteemed board members. I'm very honored today to be introducing one of our students who's going to be reading the Board Proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month. And I'm also introducing one of our faculty members, Professor of Spanish, Martha Torres Mendez, who's going to share with you some of the activities and events that our school is organizing in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you. Our student who's reading the Board Proclamation this morning is Chitelle Garcia Rivera.
Good morning. My name is Chitelle Garcia Rivera, and I will be reading the proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas Americans of Hispanic heritage have a sophisticated ancestry which dates back thousands of years, expoloring and settling in our country before the War of Independence. And whereas they brought with them a deep commitment to family and community, a strong worth ethic, and an unwavering belief in the American dream. And whereas, in a nation that derives so much strength from cultures and races, Hispanic Americans are thriving force in our society and a vital part of our economy. And whereas, let us reflect on the countless ways in which Hispanics have contributed to our nation's success. And let us reaffirm our commitment to expanding opportunity and building an ever-brighter future for all. Let us embrace that diversity that strengthens us and whereas, College of the Desert is a proud Hispanic-serving institution and a member of the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of Trustees, faculty, staff, and students take this opportunity to honor Hispanic for their many valuable contributions to this great land and be it further proclaimed that the Board of Trustees of the Desert Community College Districts are pleased to recognize September fifteen through October fifteen as National Hispanic Heritage Month.
So Professor Martha Torres Mendez is going to share with you, as I mentioned, some activities and events that our school is organizing in coordination with other schools and departments in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, board members. I am excited to extend an invitation to all our community, students, faculty. These are three events that I'm organizing in collaboration with different parts of our college. The first one is a tertulia, which is a traditional gathering where we read literature, a literary piece. We begin with conversation, and it would be followed by a taller, which is a writing workshop that encourages students to react, to reflect on their identity, culture, and lived experiences. This workshop will be co-led with Professor Christy Camacho. And again, the goal is to foster literary appreciation and creative expression to open a space for students to share their stories. This one is scheduled for October first at one P M., one P M. in Craven Center. The second event, it's in collaboration with ASCAD and with the Office of Student Life, and this is a faculty panel titled From Dreams to Degrees. And again, this is an opportunity for students to network and meet faculty across disciplines. Students will hear from faculty about their educational journeys, and the panel will be co-moderated with the president, the ASCAD President Juan Falcon. This collaborative approach shows that our faculty, our diverse faculty, and again, it supports a student's success and engagement. The panel will take place on October ninth. It's a Thursday, and it will be in the multipurpose, multipurpose room in Cravens. And our last event, and this will be our closing event, it's a documentary screening. We'll be screening a documentary titled Hummingbirds from two thousand twenty-four. It's a documentary about two teenagers in Laredo, Texas, on the U.S.-Mexico border. The film explores identity and personal growth through compelling personal stories. The screening is scheduled for Wednesday, October fifteenth, which is the last day of Hispanic Heritage Month, and it will be here on campus at six P M. This is, after the screening, we will have a bilingual Q and A, and, and just to encourage broad participation from the students and the community. I want to thank everybody for supporting my ideas in organizing a series of events. Dean Pappas and Dean Maldonado, as well as Dean Alex Hassan. And again, also, I want to recognize the, the College of the Desert libraries for their support in creating a display for, you know, the art collection, the library collection with titles, so students going into the library, they will be able to see titles in Spanish, titles in English that, again, reflect our diverse population. And last but not least, I want to thank Rosia Costa. She's behind all the logistics, and she's helping me and everybody make this possible. So thank you so much. And again, please, I encourage everybody to join us in any, if not all, of these events, and thank you for having us.
Thank you, Professor Torres Mendez. Super proud of your efforts and your leadership and the vision that's reflected in all of the thoughtful activities that you have planned. Lastly, I just want to share, this flag that I'm holding in my hand is going to be flown in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month at three of our campus locations. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And on behalf of the board, I want to thank Heat Cell, Professor Torres Mendez, and of course, Dean Pappas. Item four point oh four, Proclamation, Right Share Week. President Martinez Garcia, could you please help us introduce our reader for this proclamation?
Yes, I'd like to call on Acting Director of Human Resources and Employment Relations, Fausto, to bring this item to us.
Yes. I'd like to introduce Patricia Reyes, Administrative Services Assistant, who will read the proclamation for Right Share.
Good morning, everybody. Buenos dias. Happy Friday. President Val Martinez Garcia, Chair Kinnaman, and VPs, and public and staff. My name is Patricia Reyes, and I'm going to be reading the Right Share Week proclamation. Whereas right-sharing services have transformed urban mobility by providing safe, reliable, and affordable transportation options, reducing traffic congestion and lowering carbon emissions through shared rides, and whereas right-sharing services continue to collaborate with local governments, businesses, and nonprofits to support community initiatives, improve transportation equity, and promote sustainable urban development. And whereas College of the Desert is committed to fostering innovation, sustainability, and accessibility in transportation for all staff, faculty, and students. And whereas College of the Desert participates with the South Coast Air Quality Management District to mitigate mobile source emissions generated from employee commutes, to comply with federal and state Clean Air Act requirements, Health and Safety Code, and the Federal Clean Air Act. And whereas College of the Desert acknowledges the role of right-sharing in enhancing public safety by offering cash incentives and other benefits for employees that use alternate modes of transportation to work during peak travel times and special events. And whereas right-sharing platforms such as iCommuter that partners with College of the Desert have expanded transportation access for undeserved communities, supported local tourism, and created flexible economic opportunities for thousands of drivers across the region. Now therefore, be it, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Desert Community College District at its board meeting of September the nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, designate October sixth through the October twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, as College of the Desert's Right Shared Week. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees encourages observance of Right Share Week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And you'll be getting an email from me soon regarding Right Share Week. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Patricia, and Director Frosto. Item four point oh five, Proclamation, Transfer Month. President Martinez Garcia, could you please help us introduce our reader for this proclamation?
Yes, it's my honor to ask VP Phillips to bring us this item.
Thank you. And I am happy to present Khan Wong, our current transfer counselor, who will introduce
Good morning, board members, student trustee, President Martinez Garcia, VPs, and members of the community. My name is Khan Wong, coordinator of the Transfer Center. I'm here to present our student speaker for the proclamation of Transfer Month. Before I introduce Ashley, I would like to thank the board for recognizing the vital role of transferring at College of the Desert. Last fall, through the efforts of Counseling Services and the Transfer Center team, almost eight hundred students applied to Cal State San Bernardino. In ten days, we are holding our annual Fall Transfer Fair in the Craven Student Services Center. This year, over thirty colleges and universities have confirmed their participation, giving COD students an opportunity to directly interact with many schools throughout California and some out-of-state ones. I would like to invite all of you to the Transfer Fair on September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce Ashley Awayo. Ashley graduated from high school from Nova Academy in two thousand twenty-three, where she started dual enrollment with College of the Desert. She was admitted to CSU Monterey Bay out of high school, but plans changed, and she enrolled full-time at COD instead. Ashley quickly took all the opportunities that COD afforded her. She joined Pledge and the Math Engineering Science Achievement Program, or MESE. Through her time at MESE, she learned up and applied for the Summer two thousand twenty-five Research Internship with Brown University Deep's Leadership Alliance. The research internship was through Brown's program, Dynamic Earth in the Twenty-First Century, funded by the National Science Foundation. Along with her faculty mentor from Brown, she and other students from across the nation spent a summer conducting research in ocean, climate, and environmental science, including work in community science and environmental justice in the South and Sea. Ashley and her fellow student researchers will be presenting their summer work at the National Science Foundation meeting in New Orleans this coming December. Ashley is grateful for her COD professors, specifically Professor Cruz in the Biology Department, who provided her with a letter of recommendation and encouragement to apply for the internship. She plans to transfer to UC San Diego to pursue a degree in marine biology or environmental sciences. Here's Ashley Awayo with the proclamation for Transfer Month.
Whereas transfer to a four-year university is one of the primary roles of the community college system as outlined in the California Master Education Plan and reaffirmed in the California Promise Program. And whereas the social and community impact of obtaining a bachelor's degrees improves financial stability, health, and increases tax revenues, helping our nation, state, and local communities. Whereas the state chancellor's office has identified the inland imperial as an area for opportunities to grow in transfer numbers. And whereas College of the Desert is one of the California community colleges striving to achieve the state's goals and is the primary community college serving the entire Coachella Valley. Whereas College of the Desert has dedicated fiscal and personnel resources to actively grow our transfer population and streamline degree pathways for students. And whereas October begins the application cycle to the California State University System and University of California, our largest transfer partner institution. Now therefore, be it resolved that October be proclaimed Transfer Month as College of the Desert. Thank you.
And again, on behalf of the boards, I want to, I want to thank Ashley and also our transfer counselor, Khan. So thank you. Item five point oh one, Approval of August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five Regular Meeting Minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the regular meeting minutes of August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
No. Second.
All right. Roll call vote, please, President Martinez Garcia.
Student trustee James.
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
Aye.
Trustee Amire.
Aye.
Trustee Odin.
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman.
Aye. At this time, we will go into board reports per Board Policy twenty-three eleven. All reports shall be limited to five minutes each. Our first report will be from our associated students of College of the Desert, Juan Falcon,
Good morning. Interesting rain yesterday. Hope everyone's okay. Good morning, President Val Martinez, members of the board, faculty, staff, and members of the public. ASCAD is off to a strong year. We have new teams that is eager to learn and ready to advocate for our students. Our committee appointments- Our committee appointments have been completed, 42 appointments across ASCOD and College of the Desert committees. Several have already begun to meet, and the remaining officers and senators are ready to get to work. To ensure and contribute, and our contributions are meaningful, we received excellent training from Academic Senate President Corbin Wild, which was amazing. Some students said she was a goat. Not my words, but I don't disagree. This boosted our confidence, especially among new members. We will continue to, we will continue this momentum with additional training on topics such as chairing meetings, board etiquette, and public speaking, so our students are even more prepared to serve and advocate for all students at COD. To increase our visibility and advocate, we plan to attend the California Community College Students Affairs Association Conference in Santa Clara, October 17th through the 19th, and the SSCCC Advocacy Academy in December in Riverside. This will help us expand our network statewide and provide with more hands-on leadership experience. Locally, we're excited to partner with Spanish Department to support the Latinx Heritage Panel on October 9th, that will be hosted in the NPR. I want to thank Martha Torres for leading this collaboration. We're also helping Club Rush in partnership with the Inter Club Council, ICC, as my colleague, Sergeant Tose Newse will mention. We expect a great turnout to kick off the semester and help students connect and de-stress. I want to invite and encourage all staff and board members to attend and show support for these campus activities. We're also finalizing the selection process for offsite center positions. The Elections Committee has worked hard to create a more democratic process rather than appointments by the ASCOD president alone, because I believe this better supports this team's development and includes a more democratic approach. We're recruiting representation from Palm Springs, Deser, Palm Springs, India, and Mecca, and we look forward to visiting these campuses to ensure we have equitable representation on all campuses, not just Palm Desert. Our Events Committee has also met in addition to planning Club Rush. We are developing a selection process for students to attend the Desert United Luncheon. Having attended in the past, I strongly believe in it offers valuable opportunities for networking and leadership development. Finally, I want to thank trustee Mary Jane Sanchez Fulton, trustee Meyer, and President Val Martinez for attending our ASCOD meetings. Your presence means a lot, a great deal to our team, and demonstrates your support and commitment. We look forward to reinforcing these partnerships to make COD an even better community for all. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And then next, on our reports of the College of the Desert Foundation, the foundation has submitted a written report, and it is posted on the agenda. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Our College of the Desert Alumni Association, our executive director also has submitted a written report, and it is posted on the agenda. California School Employees Association, CSEA, Omar Fembres, president. I think he's, yes.
Good morning, President Superintendent Martinez Garcia, Board of Trustees, and Vice Presidents. The fall 2026 semester has started, and our CSEA, 2025 semester has started, and our CSEA members were busy assisting students with both the Welcome Day and event, our biannual Welcome Tense. They braved the wind and the rain on September 2nd to help students find their classes and provided snacks and water to all who stopped by. Indeed, it was a collective effort by the entire college community to make sure our new and continuing students found their classrooms and other services. We would like to thank the president's office for the delicious Flex Employee Luncheon. It was great to see the new event space, administrative serving food, and the raffle prices. CSEA members are hoping to be able to use this space for our annual Fall Event. September is also Emergency Prepartness Month. CSEA would like to recognize our building captains and all members who took part in the recent training sessions, Stop the Bleed, Fire Safety, ALICE CPR, AED, and building captain that were offered by our Public Safety Department. Hopefully, others, including the trustees and executive cabinet, will join these ongoing training events, because it takes a team to know what to do when something happens on campus. Also this month, we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. Hispanic Heritage Month is a time to recognize, reflect, and rejoice on the valuable traditions that our ancestors brought to our community. Many of our staff identify with a strong sense of family and deep appreciation of our college community, where taking care of one another is a central value. Furthermore, a common thread in Hispanic culture is hard work and perseverance, often stemming from the sacrifices of parents who came from different homelands to build a better life. For many, being Hispanic involves embracing the celebration, cultural elements like music, food, holidays, and the Spanish language itself. This month, we would like to recognize our CSEA task employees at the temporary Palm Springs campus. This past spring, they created candy bags for students who visited tasks to seek help. The word spread quickly, and their spring stats show the results of this great idea. For 2025 visits, 365 versus 227 in 2024. 2025 total hours versus 446 versus 324 in 2024. We're excited to see the results after they offer their annual hot cocoa bar. CSEA staff would like to acknowledge VP Wilson, Bill Murray, and Marbella Ordaz for working diligently in development of the new electronic staff development form. This development will allow the district and CSEA to expedite the process in a more effective and transparent method to our classified staff. Our past process had numerous delays and unknowns. Again, we thank everyone involved for their commitment. As President Obama said, "Change will not come if we wait for some other person or some other time." We are the ones we have been waiting for. We are the change that we seek. CSEA members are proud to be actively involved in the recent changes and improvements made on our campuses. Next time you are out walking and looking at the landscaping and freshly painted interiors, please take a moment to chat with our classified staff and let them know you appreciate their hard work. Big shout out to VP West for his vision and his tireless efforts to make our college look incredible. This concludes my report.
Okay, at this time, our College of the Desert Adjunct Association, Michael Gladys, our COD AA president.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Superintendent, President Martinez Garcia, and members of the executive leadership team. Coda wishes to thank the administrators, staff, and faculty who helped make the All-Day Adjunct Day event last month such a success. We also wish to thank VP Terry Wilson and Director Belicia Fausto and the entire Human Resources Team for a very successful onboarding of adjunct new hires. Since our last board meeting, so much has happened, and so much is on the minds of our students and our community at this moment. I came across this comment published just a few days ago in a college student newspaper. The editor wrote, "The fear that controversial speech can provoke genuine violence is no longer theoretical for students, but real." A couple of my faculty colleagues confirmed this when they reported that some of their students are refusing to participate in online discussion boards for their courses for fear their opinions will put a target on their back. It seems the very foundation of education, free speech, free dialogue, the respectful exchange of varying opinions is now considered by some to be an invitation to violence. Some students now fear for their safety if they say what they really think or ask the questions they believe they need to ask. I also heard a different kind of fear this week in a committee meeting where one professor asked what they should do if law enforcement came into their classroom and they were arrested. Did the college offer any resources for faculty who were jailed? Fear, again. It brings to my mind the words of Franklin Roosevelt in his 1933 inaugural address. He said, "So first of all, let me assert my firm belief that the only thing we have to fear is fear itself. Nameless, unreasoning, unjustified terror, which paralyzes needed efforts to convert retreat into advance." So how do we deal with this? Recently, I heard the famous Dodger pitcher, Earl Hershiser, talking about how he learned to become an effective pitcher. "If a pitcher is thinking about the end of the game," he said, "or the score, or what might happen next, then he's not going to make a good pitch. The key is to focus on the present moment and make that next pitch the best that it can be." He said, "Don't think about outcomes. Think about excellence." You know, President Eisenhower was a childhood hero of mine, and of course, that gives you a clue how old I am. Eisenhower once said, "A man has to give himself up to be president. Not a what, not a lot of what he thinks or does matters unless it has to do with the welfare of those who put him in charge. Everything else waits." And isn't that true for us? Our jobs are all about the welfare of those who elected us and appointed us and about meeting the needs of our students, our faculty and staff, and our surrounding community. Everything else waits. Whatever this board and this leadership team and all the employees of this college can do to create safe spaces and protect and encourage open dialogue, that's what will reassure students, faculty, and staff. We commit to excellence in our mission. We do this one pitch at a time.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we will go to our College of the Desert Faculty Association, Adam Gill, our CODFA president. He's not with us today, okay, and I don't believe there is a report, is there? Okay, great, thank you. Moving on to our Academic Senate, Corbin Wild, our Academic Senate president. Good morning.
All right. So recently, the California Community College Chancellor's Office has released a proposed regulatory change regarding academic progress notices and academic renewal. These statewide revisions aim to replace punitive sounding terms like probation and dismissal with student-centered language and to standardize academic renewal processes across the California Community College system. This is going to be a lot of work. Colleges all across the state are now going to have to rethink their policies. They're going to have to clean up their language and create procedures that make sense for students and comply with the chancellor's office's recommendations. This work requires new APs to be drafted, training, campaigns. Basically, it's a revamp of the whole system at every single California community college. COD will not be doing this work, because we already did it. We are ahead of the curve. Oh, I don't, see, it's funny. You were like, oh my God, yeah, no, I mean, you knew, Amanda. We already did it. We did it last year, so we are ahead. So last year, under the leadership of our counseling faculty and with the careful work of the Educational Policies and Practices Committee and the Academic Senate, we updated AP 4240, Academic Renewal. So for those of you who don't know, academic renewal is a process established in Title V that allows a student to alleviate previously recorded substandard grades, so grades like Ds and Fs that don't reflect who they are as learners anymore. This does not erase their record. It's still on their record, however, it adds, it removes it from the calculation of the GPA. It's not a change in their total transcript. It's just an annotation. All the work stays visible. Those grades are set aside, and at COD, our policy allows students, once they've shown consistent success, which we've defined as a 2.0 GPA in 12 units with at least one semester elapsed, to petition for up to 30 units of poor grades to be wiped off their cumulative GPA. They can only do it once, and it can be, and it can't be used to erase grades that are integral to their major, right? So any capstone courses, things like that. It's a second chance, but it's also a carefully balanced process that protects the integrity of their academic record. This is huge for students in a student-centered college, because students are not defined by their worst semesters. Life happens, and life can derail an otherwise great academic record. Academic renewal gives them a path forward. It means a student who struggled early on can still transfer, qualify for financial aid, and get back on track. It's an equity-driven policy that says we see our students as more than a single number on a transcript. It was our counseling faculty, especially Scott Cooper and Jenna Huntsinger, who drove this work. Scott has been sharing COD's updated policy across Region 9, and it's been lifted up as the regional model. Yay. The chancellor's office is proposing a statewide model that looks remarkably like what we've already established at COD. So we are setting the standard for academic renewal across the state. So while other colleges are going to be scrambling, COD, we're sitting back and we're saying, we already did it. We're proactive. We're student-centered, and we're setting the model across the state. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the governing board, student trustee James.
Good morning, everybody. Let me get my report out, digital. I've been unplugged for a little bit. Okay. Good morning, Board of Trustees, President Val, faculty and staff, and members of the public, my fellow students, of course. This school year is off to a great start. This month has been filled with connection, collaborations, and a lot of meaningful student engagement. A personal highlight for me was volunteering with our international student program. We went on several trips together. We truly connected through sharing personal stories. We sang, we danced. It was such a powerful and meaningful exchange of cultures. We went to the Palm Springs tram, and that trip actually outlasted my phone. It broke that day. But thankfully, I and one of the international students, we started a shared album, and I uploaded 250 pictures. So when my phone broke, that was like pretty much the only pictures I had, because I lost a lot of data, but I had those 250 pictures in our shared album, which has now grown to over 3,000 pictures, and it's still being added on every day, even while we're all in different places and different countries. And it's, it means a lot to me. So this is truly a living collection of student memories and connection. I also want to take a moment to truly uplift my team. Our Officer of External Affairs and our Vice President of ASCOD and our President, all of our senators have stepped into ambassador roles for basic needs. They're all fierce advocates for access, equity, student, student collab, and student collaboration. I truly believe that we're working so well together to expand exposure as ASCOD, innovate our way out of these obstacles, support all students, and develop our faculty leaders. I have also been collaborating with several student groups, including Basic Needs, our Dance Dynasty Group, our Foster Youth, Roadrunner Makers. A special shout out to our very own Roadrunner Radio, who made an appearance at a recent ASCOD meeting, and they brought fun ideas and engaging presents. I'd also like to thank trustee Mary Sanchez and trustee Meyer and president Val. I'd also like to thank Trustee Mary Sanchez and Trustee Meyer and President Val for visiting and offering public comments during our ASCOD meetings. It's really appreciated, and your involvement is seen and felt by all of us. Our ASCOD Student Senate meetings have continued with regular weekly meetings since our last board meeting, and I've had several one-on-one check-ins with all members of my team, with President Val, and several of faculty. One idea we're really excited about this month is the launch of a student-led campus tour program. This is designed to help either new or returning students, anybody who's lost or confused and just kind of wants to know where their classes are, where all the facilities are. So student leaders will serve. Student leaders will serve. We have full team support for this. Our entire team has signed up, so it is just a matter of making it official. I've had opportunities to inspire other students to lean into their ideas, trust their talents, and find power in our community. Lastly, I was honored to be featured in the SSCC statewide newsletter for September. Yeah, I'm so grateful to be doing this work, truly. And, you know, being a part of a team that doesn't just say they're showing up, but you feel they're showing up and you see it. So thank you for having me here.
Thank you. And at this time, I would call on Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
What a wonderful, that's what we're here for, for the students. Anyway, busy month. Buenas tardes todos. Happy Hispanic Heritage Month, a time when we celebrate resilience, culture, cultura, contributions that keep shaping our comunidades, communities. And let's be honest, Hispanic Heritage Month reminds us the resilience isn't just a theme for this month. It's a story. It's a story of our students, our faculty, our classified, and staff. All of you are writing stories each day and influencing each other every single day. So it's not just one month, but it's always creating the future. This past week was full. On September 6, I attended the nurse pinning ceremony. I have yet to miss one since 2012, so I'm very proud of my record. Healthcare is so critical in California and everywhere. So I always want to thank the whole team. There's so many, our faculty, our staff, Sarah, everyone, the whole team, for putting on another beautiful event. And I love your music always at the nurse pinning. I think it's one of the best. Keep it going. Also attended the several Chamber and Commerce events, including the Palm Springs and Rancho Mirage networking luncheon. It's, I'm always mentioning as a small business owner, how we have to partner with our local business owners and encourage them to connect through handshake and getting interns out to our small business. It's the small business employers that hire. So it was wonderful that I had the opportunity, and I would love to maybe create something that we have representatives from our career intern to come to those events and share more of that because our small business community needs them, wants them, and I think our students also could get an intern and eventually a job. So I think it's wonderful, and I encourage all the faculty and staff to always mention handshake and all the different components that are available for our small business owners. I really want to give a shout out to the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce for giving the College Desert as a sponsor for their upcoming career and job workshop. It was wonderful to get that public shout out and talk about us, the Roadrunners, to the whole business community. Yesterday, I also joined a very special group, and I saw a lot of our faculty and students there. It was called, it's a program that I want my faculty, the staff, the students to all know about. It's called the Coachella Valley Leadership Project. So basically, that project, we currently have three students there, Daisy, Christopher Martinez is also a graduate, and now we currently have a faculty member, Jenna is now the current cohort. This program is a wonderful program that makes you go through a cohort and you see all the different government entities that are across the Coachella. So I encourage faculty, staff, classified, and students to get involved in that. The next cohort class is coming up next year. The 2025-26 is over, but please look into that. It's called the Coachella Valley Leadership Project. Also, on a note, last week I attended Trip Tuesday, where we were proud to support a nonprofit, dear to my heart, Best Friends Closet. Best Friends Closet's main mission is to give clothing, professional clothing, to our students, just like we hope to partner more. So it was very special to hear about Desert Best Friends Closet, where they provide professional clothing for interviews for students and people who need that when they interview. So a big shout out to them. Also, these are the kind of partnerships that remove barriers and lift the confidence of the students when they interview. It was just wonderful. I've heard students tell me if it wasn't for a desk, I would not have a professional dress to interview. So they do the project, and it was one of our students that came up to me and told me that. So they're doing a beautiful job, and I would like to extend that. Hopefully, the College of the Desert, maybe we could have Monday Shoe Day, or our faculty could donate a tie or something, something that our community can provide at our basic needs, something that, you know, I'll mention later on. So another thing, a heartfelt, heart, very heart, for our public safety and veterans team, I want to thank you for organizing the September 11 reverence ceremony. What a beautiful, it's always good to remember that. I was unable to attend, but we're honoring the service and sacrifice, and that's something we must never take for granted, our freedom. Earlier this month, Trustee Meyer and I attended the ASCOD meeting, and I want to personally thank the student senators, Juan, and everyone in the student senate. Something that I learned and was so beautiful, that there's, and I want everyone to know, these students are on eight committees, seven committees. This is incredible. They really care about our college and want to get involved. They spent countless hours volunteering on committees, campus services. And you, just a big kudos to our student senators that are there. So I just want to thank you for volunteering because they have actual class. Oh, thank you, Trustee Jeff, for organizing our trustee welcome table, Welcome Back Day. And Trustee Odin and I attended the virtual conference of the California League of Government Relations Seminar. Thank you so much. And I wanted to mention, if I may, the AI Conference, but I'm sure one of our other trustees will be mentioning the highlights of the Chancellor's AI Conference. And as I, it's just a powerful reminder, AI isn't replacing us, but it's challenging us to keep learning and be that lifelong learners that we are. So we're looking ahead, and just thank you for your time, and keep on trekking, students, faculty, staff, and community for being part of this journey with us and with all of us. Together, we're shaping not just classrooms, but futures. Thank you so much in this entry report. Sorry for going overboard.
Thank you, Trustee Sanchez. Trustee Meyer.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Chair Kamen, Trustee Board, President Val Martinez-Garcia, staff, all who's in attendance, even online. Thank you. It has now been 10 months since the residents of Coachella Valley entrusted me with the honor of being a trustee. When I was sworn in, I made a personal commitment to learn everything I could about our college and what it truly means to be a trustee. That journey has brought me to where I stand today. The word trustee contains some powerful word, trust, and that's no coincidence. The public places its trust in us to lead with integrity, to shape policy, and to envision the future of our college, and to do so with the input and feedback of the community in which we serve. While our only direct employee is the Superintendent President, it is through that leadership that we, as a unified Board of Trustees, guide the college forward. No single trustee acts alone. We govern together. Trust also means representation. As elected officials, we are called upon not only to make decisions, but to represent the college with dignity and professionalism. Across the Coachella Valley, we attend events not as the stars of the program, but as guests. These events are rarely about us and often not even about the college. We are there to honor the hosting organization's agenda, to participate respectfully, and to maintain the decorum expected of public servants. Though elected by voters in our individual districts, our responsibility extends to the entire college district. We represent all students, faculty, and staff across the valley. That means doing what's right, not just for our constituents, but for the college as a whole. As we prepare for the upcoming accreditation process, with a written report due in December and interviews expected in March, I want to encourage my fellow trustees to pursue the CCLC Excellence in Trustees Certification. I completed this certification earlier this year, and I believe that if we all do the same, it will send a powerful message to the accreditation board that we are committed to excellence in governance. Trustee Sanchez mentioned this certification in previous report. I know she is well on her way to completing it, as are others who have attended webinars and conferences, which will also qualify into this process. I am confident that our college will pass accreditation process with flying colors. In the past weeks, I had the privilege of attending CCLC Future Summit in Santa Clara with many of the college staff. I believe there was eight or nine of us there. It's a future summit, but I'd say 80% of the agenda was centered around AI and how that impacts education. On a side note, two of us made our plane flight back in time without panicking and changing our plane. We had 30 seconds in between flights in Las Vegas, but we made it. In the past few weeks, I've had the privilege, okay, I already did that. We explored how to prepare for the evolving landscape of student learning and how to bring those innovations into the College of the Desert. My wife and I also included our second hosting of Japanese exchange students in the international program, an experience that continues to enrich our lives and our community. We had two very wonderful young ladies who are now our Japanese daughters to join the other ones that we have cultured in Japan as well. I attended the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce breakfast, where President Garcias Martinez delivered a powerful, inspiring keynote address. Later that same day, I joined the mayor's luncheon hosted by the Greater Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce, where mayors from all nine cities and tribal representatives shared their insights on the future of our region. I recently attended, on behalf of the college, the Bermuda Dunes Council Meeting, where I met members of the board, and we've been invited to provide a report at every one of their meetings. President Martinez-Garcias was there with me, and we made some very good contacts in that region, that area. I'm pleased to report that enrollment numbers meet expectations and continue to grow. If this trend continues, we'll see our college flourishing with new opportunities for students and growth in areas we might yet imagine. Thank you for your continued support, your trust, and your commitment to our shared mission. Together, we're building a stronger future for the College of the Desert and for the entire Coachella Valley. And those of you who know a few personal things about me, Hispanic Heritage Month means a lot to me and my family and those who know why I say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Meyer. Trustee Odin.
I've spent over 30 years on this campus, and I'd like to say that it's never looked better. Thank you for your efforts very much, Vice President BP West. And to the faculty and counselors for the academic renewal and being on the vanguard, it's always best to be first. On August 26, I attended a webinar on federal funding for educational institutions. And on the 28th of August, I attended the presidential address during FLEX. On September the 3rd, I attended the Palm Springs Campus Update on their traffic study. And on September the 4th, I attended the preparation for the BA in Casino Management with the Alucol Inte Ban of Kauai Indians, along with the president. On the 9th, I attended a webinar on board decorum, and on the 10th, a webinar on AI. On the 12th, I attended the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, where President Val Martinez-Garcia was the speaker, did an outstanding job giving an update on the College of the Desert, and later that day did an agenda review for the board. On 9/16, I attended a webinar on the federal cuts for minority-serving institutions and Hispanic-serving institutions. And while that does not impact us directly sheer at this point in time, for our students who are transferring and going on, it will definitely have impacts on the colleges and opportunities. It's not so much financial aid as it is to the programs that will be cut, programs that support and help students, and they are vital programs. And yesterday, we also did, it'd be filmed, the interviews for the board presentation. But during one of the webinars, it talked about assembly bills that direct, well, a lot of assembly bills, but specifically the ones that most impact students. There are 809 bills on the governor's desk, down from 1,300. But there are a couple that really stood out and that they talked about a lot. One of them is AB 90, which comes under Basic Needs, and it's the overnight parking on college campuses for our students who may be unhoused. But there are a lot of hurdles. It's passed the first committee, but it still has to go further to the next committee. But it's coming. It's coming, so, you know, we need to be prepared. The main one that had a lot of discussion was AB 1,400, which is the BA in Nursing. And there's a tremendous statewide push. I've been communicating with our Superintendent President on it and following up, and we're doing our due diligence locally to get the support that we need to make sure, because there were 15 colleges and they put it down to 10. So this is real important. It's important to the Coachella Valley. It's important to College of the Desert. One of the programs that was talked about because of the need, the tremendous need nationally, is air traffic controller. And I think that's definitely something we have in airports. We've got the support that we need to look at in offering those services to the community. In listening to the federal cuts to minority-serving institutions and Hispanic-serving institutions, it was interesting that even though they took funding from one segment of the community, they turned around, which makes no sense to me, and offered that same funding to other groups. The old divide and conquer, you know, issue. Luckily, they all refused the funding, not at the expense not at the expense of others who are losing their funding. That was tremendous. It gave me hope, maybe in this country, that people still want to do the right thing. But as we look at, you know, these months where we set aside to honor the history of people who have contributed to this, to society, they are important. So how do you, on one hand, say, "We're celebrating this month", and then cut opportunities for people at the same time who are trying to continue those same accomplishments and more? The word resilience stands out in my mind because at the Hispanic Chamber, honoring those men and women who were giving back to the community under circumstances that are not the best, but still choosing to be servants to the community was so inspiring. So when we look at these reduction in funds, the resilience of the community is shining through brighter than ever and needed more than ever. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Trustee Oden. I'd like to thank President Garcia for his outreach efforts in the community and his leadership in the community. I'd also like to thank my fellow trustees for their ongoing commitment and support of our president, and what he knows that he needs to do to be able to lead, and how he needs to organize this institution, support the staff, and serve our students and our community. And I really sincerely, with my colleagues, I appreciate you allowing him and supporting him in that endeavor. I specifically hope that everyone will reflect on some of the resolutions that were read today. We can, through our individual and collective actions, serve as beacons of light in a time when it seems like there is so much fear. And I hope all of us are committed to stand up bravely and lead, and not succumb to those fears. And along with some of the comments that have been made today, there's been a lot not said, which I think is good, because we have risen above that and talked more about how we can move forward. And as an educational institution, we know this is the environment where we do exchange freely ideas, and where we should have free speech. And that is our strength. And that is also why we've always been such a strong nation, because we have provided those opportunities for people to learn how to think, problem solve, and to unite. So again, I applaud my trustees. I applaud this institution and fostering that type of climate and culture, because we need not live in fear. We need to lead, and lead strongly, and pull people together. Superintendent President Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Roadrunner family, before I start, I just want to clear the record that it was me that panicked. No one else that was with me panicked during that transfer of airplanes. I just want to make that publicly known. They followed their fearless leader into the dark, and we left in the mid-dark from Ontario to come back. So, my bad. All right. So with that said, I want to say thank you to all the CSCA members. Welcome Day was amazing, faculty who supported it, from the leadership and Student Services, just saying, great job, everybody. Also, to echo everyone else's comments up here from the board, campus facilities look great. Thank you to the CSC members who work so hard, also to VP West for all of his efforts. To the faculty, thank you for all of your efforts to be so inclusive and welcoming to all of our students, and all the nerves that go along with that first day. I've heard stories from students and talked to very many of them, who've all said the same thing, just what a welcoming environment they walked into in their in-person classes. So thank you for all of that. And then also to Ask God, thank you for entertaining me and letting me sit down and share our pillars with you, but also for you sharing with me some of your thoughts and what you'd like to be, I'd like to accomplish this year. So I really appreciate that. It was very, very enlightening to me, I should say. So as we celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month, we also affirm our commitment here at College of the Desert to a safe, inclusive, and supportive environment where every student, regardless of backgrounds, has the chance to thrive. Hispanic Heritage Month is both a celebration, but it's also a call to action, urging us to uplift every voice, expand access, and continue building a future rooted in equity, dignity, and belonging. This month has reminded me of a balance between honoring legacy, facing challenges, and advancing our mission at College of the Desert. In the reflecting for this update, I wanted to stop and reflect on the life of Harold Matzer. He was a visionary, a philanthropist here in the desert who reshaped the communities of Palm Springs, the Coachella Valley, and our college. His support of education, the arts, and healthcare was and will always be a testament to his belief in the power of possibility. I also want to turn our attention to an article in the Desert Sun that highlighted one of our faculty, Mary Suarez, a COD alumna who had come full circle. Once a nursing student at COD, she is now a nursing faculty member, reshaping the next generation of healthcare leaders. Her story is a living example of what access and opportunity can mean for our students and our community. I also want to take a moment to reflect on the Supreme Court ruling permitting profiling, which sows fear and uncertainty in our community, undermining the dignity that every person should be permitted to live with. Meanwhile, the Department of Education has eliminated, as you've heard before, discretionary funding for minority-serving institutions, including HSI-like COD. This removes vital support for equity, dignity, and student success. These moments underscore why our college must stand firm as a safe, inclusive place where all students can belong, like you've heard up here today. That commitment extends just beyond our campus, though. In recent weeks, I've had the privilege of speaking at the Hispanic American Chamber of Commerce, where I emphasize COD's role in expanding opportunity across our region. Later today, with some of our trustees, I will be attending the SINK Fire Gala, continuing to strengthen our civic partnerships that sustain our valley. These moments align with our recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, a celebration of history, culture, and contribution, but also a call to action. At a time when the national decisions may restrict opportunity, Hispanic Heritage Month reminds us to lift up the dignity, and like Trustee Oden said, the resilience of our students and their families. Finally, I want to turn my attention inwardly for a moment, and to let everyone know that safety remains a priority for us at College of the Desert, specifically at the India campus. I would like everyone to know that I have worked with VP West to assign Director Nakamura, Director of Public Safety, to the India campus for the next two months, where he is going to lead a safety assessment. His presence will heighten visibility and provide the assurance that India remains a safe educational space and a supportive learning environment. At the same time, we continue advancing our strategic priorities, expanding dual enrollment, preparing for accreditation, deepening our regional partnerships, aligning with the Vision 2030, and cultivating a culture of belonging. College of the Desert remains committed to our students, our faculty, staff, and our communities. Construction at the Palm Springs campus, I'm happy to report, is on target. Roadrunner Motors is on target, and all of the projects at the Palm Desert campus are on target. These past weeks have been a reminder of while challenges persist, so do stories of generosity and progress. At College of the Desert, we will continue to honor legacy, champion dignity, strengthen safety, and imagine new possibilities for every student and every member of our family. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President, Val Martinez-Garcia. Next, we'll move on to our consent agenda, item 7.01. Blanket motion, all consent items will be voted on in one motion. Any board members may request that any items be moved to the action agenda. Are there any requests to separately consider any of the consent agenda items?
I would like to pull 9.02, I believe, approval of expenditures, contracts, agreements, and non-monetary agreements, specifically item 091925. Thank you. Executive file attachments.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Sanchez Fulton. We have a motion to adopt, no, we don't. We are going to move item 9.2 to the action item, and that will become, I may have to have some help here from somebody.
Did you mean 9.02?
Is it 9.02? Okay, thank you.
That's a question I'm not sure.
Is it 9.02?
Yes, it is, correct.
Okay, 9.02, thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have Eileen O'Hara Anderson online to help with any of the parliamentary questions.
So, Eileen, we've got a motion to move item 9.02 from consent to action.
Right.
Hi there.
I would invite a motion to do that, to remove 9.02 and make it the next number in order on the action item agenda. Take a motion, a second, and a vote.
So do we have a second to?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and roll call this.
Student Trustee James.
I just want some clarification on this one. I'm just opening up documents, but if you can elaborate.
Any discussion on it?
I just want to commend the hall pass. I just want to mention how, something, it's so important for students that take public transportation, and how important it is for the hall pass for students. So I just wanted to make that comment, how much we've all worked hard back in 2013 to push this forward, for students to have hall passes with Sunline and that agreement, that we, all of us, worked so hard on that. That was why I pulled it, because I wanted to mention and commend that.
So.
We, the students, say aye, we support transportation.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Question carries.
All right, so we have a new action item. It is, looks like it will now be 10.01. Is that correct, Eileen? And it's, yeah, that is correct.
I'm just checking your numbering. I believe that's correct. Yes, that will be 10.01.
Yeah, thank you very much. All right, so now we have item 9.02, is now 10.01. And do I have a motion to approve 10.01?
Still move.
You know, my president's really good here. He said we still have to approve the consent agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the revised consent agenda?
So move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. It takes the village. Any discussion? All right, can we do a roll call vote on that?
Student Trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
All right, now, our new action item, 10.01, formerly 9.02. Do I have a motion to approve item 10.01?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we have some clarification on 10.01?
Yes. Yeah.
The agreement to provide the College of the Desert, the agreement, I just wanted to thank Sunline publicly. So this particular is about free and unlimited access to the Sunline Transit System. We were just, I just want to make sure and give out the shout-out to Sunline Transit Area, because transportation is so key for a lot of us. Some people don't have cars, and thank you.
Any additional discussion on this item?
Good ones for us.
Okay, then, can we have a roll call vote on this, President Martinez-Garcia?
Trustee James, student Trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
All right, moving on to action item 11.01, Board Member Travel, California Community College Collective Equity Impact Institute. Do I have a motion to approve for up to three members to attend the California Community College Collective Equity Impact Institutes presented, as presented?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, roll call vote, President Martinez-Garcia.
Student Trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to action item 12.01, Public Employee Appointment, Assistant Director of Nursing and Allied Health. It is recommended that the board approve the employment agreement for the Assistant Director of Nursing and Allied Health. This recommended action will approve the employment agreement for the Assistant Director of Nursing and Allied Health commencing from September 2, 2025, through September 1, 2027, with salary placement at range 8, column 9, for an annual salary of $150,294.516, as well as provisions for evaluation and fringe benefits comparable to other similar leadership employees. Do I have a motion to approve the employment agreement as presented?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, President Martinez-Garcia.
Student Trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Oden?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Item 12.02, Public Employee Appointment, Public Safety Academy Manager. It is recommended that the board approve the employment agreement for the Public Safety Academy Manager as presented. This recommended action will approve the employment agreement for the Public Safety Academy Manager commencing from September 2, 2025, through September 1, 2027, with salary placement at range 7, column 10, for an annual salary of $142,370.064, as well as provisions for evaluation and fringe benefits comparable to other similar leadership positions. Do I have a motion to approve the employment agreement as presented?
We're on 1201 or 2?
1202. We have to have a motion in a second before we can discuss.
So move.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
Okay, I'll start this. There were comments made in the, in the public portion earlier, and I'm not sure what that was all about and what, what the comments were and how relevant it is to this. I don't, I need some background or know more about this.
I'd call on Acting Director Fausto to clarify the question.
Yes, Chairman Kinnaman, members of the board. With regards to the public comment that was addressed to you, as you will see here, this is noted for one public safety manager position. There is also on the agenda for a second public safety manager position. This particular position for this individual, this that was presented, he is currently an existing employee. The position was under a classified administrator, so the classification has recently changed to an educational administrator. He has noted that he had not received the information from his leadership. The information was presented to him from Human Resources. I do, and I had had previous conversations with him. There has just been some clarifying questions that he has of his concerns, because now he's going from as classified leadership to not having a contract, to now being an educational administrator, to be placed on a contract. So he has some concerns that might impact him, that he feels in a negative way, possibly for retirement purposes, but I have all that, as I shared with him previously through a conversation, that we, it should not negatively impact him. And I have also scheduled to meet with his dean to be able to have that conversation with her included, so that this way he can have reassurance of the transition that is changing on his job description.
So, I have a question. Is 12.02 and 12.03 the same person, just changing things, or is it two different people?
Trustee Meyer, it is two different individuals.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, I would, I'm going to ask the president and maybe our, our acting HR director that we went through, I'm sure, the processes that we typically go through in coming to this determination for making this recommendation.
That is true, and if you want to expand on that?
Yes, I'd be happy to expand on that. Yes, we did go through the processes that need to be completed accurately. The job description was presented to the board last month for your approval. There was conversations that took place to ensure that this transition would occur if it was due to, as the employee has stated, that maybe they may not have received the full clarification from their leadership. That's what I'm trying to have the clarification presented to him. I know that we've undergone some transition in that area, so I want him to feel comfortable with what the communication that is coming from his current dean and reflective to his new job and, oh, sorry, not the new job, but the change in the classification of while the job is posted, and to reassure him of that, and we'll give him all that information correctly again to him in person.
And on, I just want to make sure that we did hear, we heard that, and so, anything we, we agree upon, I just want to make sure that there's a caveat, I don't, our attorneys there are just making sure that there's, we could use language to make sure that everything is communicated, because they had a concern, and, you know, as, I'm just making sure that their voices are heard and every voice is heard on that, and I know the processes were done, but I just want to make sure that our decision right now, when we make a vote, that means that we legally are accepting the terms, is that correct, and the agreement? As it stands now?
Yes, Chairman Kinnaman, trustee Fulton Sanchez, yes, that is correct. With regards to his concerns that were addressed, as he, you might have clearly specified, as he had said, that he did not feel that he received the proper communication from his leadership. That's what I want to ensure, that he's receiving that communication from his leadership. He is fully vetted with knowing what is on the job description, but he's, it's the contract that he wants to ensure that he still has certain rights, which of course, that is communicated clearly through that contract, and that it does not negatively impact him with regards to his pay, which it will not, and any other questions that he might have with regard to his hours of work, that also is specific there, that it will not have a negative impact in his current hours that he is currently assigned to.
Richard, here.
Yes. My confusion was the public comments about safety and this all being together, so, but this is clearly an employee situation that has been vetted, so it was just confusing to me of how that impacted the other safety issues. So, I'm clear, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, I'm going to repeat what I think I heard. He's not clear of all the terms in his contract. When he becomes clear of that, the communication to him will clear up his lack of knowledge or confusion over this issue, and he, his classification and compensation, everything will, will remain impact, not impact his retirement.
Trustee Meyer, that is correct. This is not going to negatively impact his retirement.
And that was his concern?
That was one of his concerns, as well as his hours of, that he's currently been assigned to work, thinking that it would change his current working hours, and it does not.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
And then, this contract is comparable to other educational administrator contracts. I know there's probably a template, and so.
Correct, Chairman Kinnaman, that is correct. This is definitely comparable. We, we have, definitely want to assure him that it is from this timeframe that is stated as of September 2 of 2025 until September 1 of 2027, and that he would definitely, at that time, be having a conversation with Human Resources prior to that, so that he would be able to, once again, review the contract, have an understanding, but also have the discussion with his leadership.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other just questions, discussion? You want to?
Yes. Director Fausto, can you clarify for the board the difference between a educational administrator and a classified administrator?
I would be happy to be able to do that, President Val. With regards to the difference between a classified administrator and the educational administrator, as a classified administrator, we are not held to a contract. We do not provide supervision to any faculty members. We provide supervision to staff. In the current role as the Public Safety Academy Manager, they are working closely with faculty members. They are then now being able to have the opportunity to be able to provide that supervision to a faculty member as an educational administrator, who is interim, basically kind of like certificated, so they are able to be able to provide that guidance to those faculty and, excuse me, and provide assistance to staff and provide supervision as well. Is that helpful for that clarification? Thank you.
Okay, any additional discussion or questions? And thank you very much for addressing the concerns of the board and the questions of the board. With that, I would, we have a motion in a second, so we'll roll call vote, President Martinez Garcia.
Student trustee James?
Before I vote, is, is that off, like, is that safety person present here today?
He is not here, he's a faculty. He's not directly involved in public safety. He actually teaches public safety, actually, to be specific, fire. Trustee Sanchez Fulton? Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. At least I get a turn at it. 12.03, Public Employee Appointment Public Safety Academy Manager. It is recommended that the board approve the employment agreement for the Public Safety Academy Manager. This recommended action will approve the employment agreement for the Public Safety Academy Manager commencing from September 2, 2025 through September 1, 2027, with salary placement at range seven, column seven, for an annual salary of $125,838.372, as well as provisions for evaluation and fringe benefits comparable to other similar leadership positions. Do I have a motion to approve the employment agreement as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a concern. In this new position, will he be helping us in our Indio campus? Will his, is this, this is nothing to do with the Indio having more staff over there?
No, these, this, these are faculty positions, these are not faculty positions, these are, these are administration, administrative positions.
Administration, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion, questions of the board? Okay, roll call vote, President Martinez Garcia.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Item 12.04, College of the Desert Faculty Association and Desert Community College District Tentative Agreements. Do I have a motion to approve the College of the Desert Faculty Association and Desert Community College District Tentative Agreements as presented?
Aye.
We have a motion from, okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All right, roll call vote, President Martinez Garcia.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Item 12.05, Presentation of the Initial Reopener Proposals from the Desert Community College District to the College of the Desert Faculty Association. Do I have a motion to agendize the public hearing for the October 24, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting?
A move.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, President Martinez Garcia.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Item 12.06, Presentation of the Initial Proposals from the College of the Desert Faculty Association to the Desert Community College District. Do I have a motion to agendize the public hearing for October 24, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, President Martinez Garcia.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Item 12.07, Presentation of the Initial Reopener Proposals from the Desert Community College District to the California School Employees Association. Do I have a motion to agendize the public hearing for the October 24, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting?
So moved.
A, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, President Martinez Garcia.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Item 12.08, Presentation of the Initial Proposals from the California School Employees Associations to the Desert Community College District. Do I have a motion to agendize the public hearing for the October 24, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting?
A move.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, President Martinez Garcia.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Item 12.09, Approval of California School Employees Association, CSEA, salary schedule with position listings for fiscal year 2024 to 2025. Do I have a motion to approve item 12.09 as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, roll call vote, President Martinez Garcia.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Action item 12.10, 2025 Equal Employment Opportunity, EEO Annual Certification Form. Districts are required to report on their EEO-related activities annually to qualify for EEO funding allocated by the legislature in accordance with California Code of Regulations Title V, Section 53024.2. Do I have a motion to approve item 12.10 as presented?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call vote, President Martinez Garcia.
Student trustee James?
Of equal things, aye.
Student trustee, I'm sorry, trustee Sanchez Fulton?
Aye.
Trustee Meyer?
Aye.
Trustee Odin?
Aye.
Trustee Kinnaman?
Aye.
Question carries.
All right, moving to action item 13.01, Public Hearing and Adoption for the Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Final Budget. Before the public hearing and action on this item, I'd like to ask President Martinez Garcia to provide some context.
Yes, I will call on VP West and Assistant, he'll be assisted by Director of Fiscal Services, Diana Giharo, to present the 2526 final budget.
Thank you, Superintendent President Martinez Garcia. I'll let Diana give us a start and jump in with color commentary as she goes through, but she's put together the budget presentation similar to what she saw in tentative budget and with a couple of important updates, and she's put a lot of work into this, and so I want to give her due credit in kind of being here to share the information with you today. Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, can you all hear me? Real good? Good morning, everybody. Board of Trustees, President Val Martinez Garcia, Executive Cabinet, everybody here. I am excited to be here. Hopefully, you're all excited to hear about the budget as well. I am here to present to you the 2526 budget adoption. Do we have the clip? All right, here we go. So we will begin with our economic backdrop. As we know, the California continues to mitigate deficits. The governor's enacted budget projected a $12 billion deficit, while the Legislative Analyst Office projected something similar but slightly higher of $14 billion in deficits. The difference is based on budget proposals that the governor thinks are going to generate savings, while the Legislative Analyst Office considers this as workload changes and not necessarily savings. So as we all know, there's many factors affecting California's economy. We begin with higher baseline spending. California's medical costs were $76.8 billion in '24-'25, which has doubled since '27. There's also significantly lower revenues by about $5 billion in personal income tax, corporate tax, and also losses due to the LA fires when it comes to property taxes. Those affected by the LA fires were also granted an extension to their, to their taxes, which doesn't necessarily create deficits, but it does create deferrals for community colleges. If you all may remember, when we had Hurricane Hillary, those affected by Hurricane Hillary were also granted the extension, and that year, community colleges were presented with deferrals. There's also the ever-so-changing tariff uncertainty, which it's hard for California to create revenue projections due to all these changes with tariffs. Yeah, I think the battery's low. Here we go. Okay, thank you. All right, so here we have a depiction of how the state is addressing the $12 billion deficit and its mitigating strategies to remedy the issue. We begin with reduction in spending by $2.8 billion, primarily in healthcare programs. There's also funding shifts of $1.2 billion, for instance, shifting general, general funding spending to Proposition 4, which are climate bonds. There's also delays or deferrals in $1.9 billion, which would be, deferrals essentially is an IOU to California community colleges, allowances that would be issued to California community colleges at a later year. There's also There's also related revenue solutions such as changing rules that define how taxable profits are determined for financial institutions and also cost shifts such as spending funding loans. Yeah. The California community college factors depicted in the governor's budget include Proposition 98 funding, which was $5.3 million below the allocation from '24-'25. It also includes $408.4 million in deferrals over two years, '25, '26, and '26, '27. The deferrals translates roughly to $36.8 million for College of the Desert over the two years. This was, we started to see deferrals already. In this year's budget, we included a .1799% deferral. So we had to reduce our revenue by $173,000. This allocation is going to be issued to College of the Desert in July of '26. There's also the new funding floor, which takes effect this year. Essentially, beginning this year, districts will be funded at the highest of the SCIF-generated total computational revenue or the previous year's allocation. For instance, if COD hadn't been able to generate a higher computational revenue in '25-'26, there wouldn't be, COLA would not have been applicable and we would have been funded at our allocation that we received last year. So for the '25-'26 budget assumptions, we included a cost of living adjustment of 2.3%. We also included a 3% growth from our 320 P2 attendance, which was $10,000, $10,200 for P2. We also included a .24% decrease in PERS, 3.6 in our other post-employment benefit contributions, and 0% in capital outlay funds. So our assumptions for multi-year projections includes cost of living adjustments of 3.02 for '26-'27, 3.42 for '27-'28. We decided to include a 1% for each year for funded growth beyond COLA because we've been positively trending with our FTEs. Hopefully, we will continue on that positive trend. And for PERS, we had a slight decrease in '25-'26 and '26-'27 compared to last year. STIRS continues to stay the same at 19.1%. It has been for several years. And we included them, you know, maintaining our middle college status, which funds College of the Desert 8.9 million, and our center status funds College of the Desert 2.2 million. Here we have a very high-level view of our budget. This is the combined general fund, which includes unrestricted and restricted funds. The unrestricted funds, general fund includes revenues of $106.7, other financing sources, which are indirect costs from other grants of $487, expenditures, which includes step and column for salaries, cost of living adjustment, inflation for operational costs at $103.5, and our other post-employment benefit contribution of 3.6. So which brings us to a balanced budget for our general fund. Our restricted general fund projects a $49 million in revenue, 1.3 in other financing sources, 38.9 in expenditures, and 13.1 in contributions such as student aid. We are planning to deficit spend here, 1.6, because we're planning on spending prior year allocations that were not completely spent. And the final column is the combination of the two. Next slide, please. Here's another high view of our unrestricted general fund and our multi-year projections, as I mentioned, '25-'26 is a balanced budget. '26-'27 includes the 3.02 COLA, 1% growth in FTEs, which brings us to $110.3 in revenues, 502 in other financing sources. Expenditures also include step and column, cost of living adjustment, and inflation for operational costs, which brings us to $108.6. And other contributions, as I mentioned, are OPEP contributions of 2.1, which also brings us to a balanced budget. '27-'28, we included the cost of living adjustment of 3.42, also a 1% growth in FTEs, and brings us to $114.1 for revenues, other financing sources 5.19. And expenditures also same, include step and column, cost of living adjustment, and operational cost inflation brings us to $112.8, and our OPEP contribution of 1.8, which brings us to a balanced budget for the three years.
If I can add in here just real quick, you look at this slide, it's very high numbers, very, very kind of looking, there's a lot of detail that's embedded here. But one of the things that I will anticipate, you're going to see a lot of change in these numbers as we start to get closer. Think about over the course of these three years, the number of new facilities that are going to be opening. Think about the new campuses that are going to be opening. Think about the way we're going to be changing our operations, looking at how we're staffing and modeling things like public safety and maintenance and faculty and staff and classified professionals all across the district. So right now, these are just very basic projections, given what we know. But as we start to move forward and hone in on how we're going to staff and how we're going to operate and how we're going to move forward, I would expect you're going to see these projections start to dovetail into much more realistic numbers. And I would expect that they're going to change pretty significantly as we look at how we're going to operationalize these, these, these programs. What's exciting is, you know, you think that Palm Springs is so far out there. We're looking at, we're seeing dirt move and we're, but it's, you know, fall '27 seems like a mile away. It's not. We're going to be talking about it and what that is in six months. We're going to be talking about, hey, this is how we're thinking we're going to be staffing. This is how we're going to be operating. So we're really trying to get ahead and take those lessons learned from Indio's opening, where we were hiring and kind of staffing right at the moment as it was opening, and really try to proactively think about how we're going to open these facilities in a way so that day one, we're ready to go. So that I just wanted to highlight that as we go forward, that those are conversations that are going on behind the scenes. Big numbers, but lots of detail behind it.
Slide, please. All right, so here we have our budget highlights. We wanted to emphasize the difference when it comes to our budgeted positions in comparison to our revenue. Our general fund revenues projected to be $106.7, and our budgeted salaries are projected to be $90 million, which is, in comparison, our salaries is 83.64% compared to our revenue. So for the unaudited actuals for '24-'25, the actual salary expenses were 85.3. And the percentage compared to our revenue was 80.34. So I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Dr. Vice?
Again, as we've mentioned before in presentations, these numbers are really important to us and we've got to really watch these closely. When San Francisco and Compton College came under scrutiny in recent years, about, and FICMAC came in to help them kind of align their finances, they were right at the 85% to 90% salary benefits. And so we have inched, we're projecting a little inch closer to that, knowing that there's going to be a lot of folks that leave and come in and out. There's going to be ins and outs, so we don't think it's going to be that high. But we really watch that number closely and make financial decisions based on kind of monitoring that because you, you don't, while we want, we know the largest amount of our money is going to be in our employees. We also need to make sure that we have breadth across our budget to be able to absorb some of the hits that we might have coming down the road because of the state budget.
And also to keep in mind, you know, if it's, if we're spending 80% of our, of our revenue on salaries, that leaves less money for operational costs and everything else that, you know, we need to help out with our students and our education. So always important to keep that in mind. Finally, the restricted fund budget projects a $49 million in revenue and $51 million in expenses. As I mentioned, we're planning on deficit spending prior year balances. Slide, please. Budget highlights. Of course, as I mentioned, California continues to manage the deficits. But the governor has continued to protect TK-12 education and community colleges. We haven't been completely affected by all these deficits. We've been protected, but if the deficits continue, we don't know that that's going to be the case in future years. We hope to continue with our increase of enrollment. As I mentioned, we've been trending positively with enrollment. And we must continue with $10,000 FTEs for our middle college status and $10,000 FTEs for our center status.
And reminders that we get bumps for that middle college, middle-sized college, and for that center status. And again, we're already planning and looking proactively at Palm Springs, that when that opens, how do we quickly get to center status there? How do we augment and get those associated bumps as we go forward? So all of that planning is in place to position us for the future.
Yes. And also risks to consider, the '25-'26 and '26-'27 deferrals, as I mentioned, it roughly translates to $36.8 million for College of the Desert over two years. Of course, as I mentioned, maintaining middle college status and center status and the ever-so-haunting, for me at least, the 50% law. We always have to make sure that we're in compliance. We don't want the chancellor's office knocking on our doors. So we're always, whenever we're budgeting, making sure that we're on the right side. This year, we ended at 50.91%, so we were...
Cleared that hurdle easy. He's a guy.
Yeah, it was great. And so we spent $826,000 on top of the 50, so we, we're on the good side. So making sure that we're in compliance. And so we'll move on to the next slide, please. Here we have enrollment trends for, from '24 to '25, all the way through '23-'24 is the annual apportionment attendance report. The last bar here, '24-'25, is our attendance report, the P2, which is what I mentioned, $10,200 in our P2 attendance report last year. So we've been positively trending from '20, '20, '21, all the way through to, you know, this year so far. So hopefully, we can continue trending positively. And I don't know if you want to add anything to that fabulous 1920 number?
Yeah, just as a reminder, we spoke about this before, but that 1920 number was an inflated number. We had at that time, the summer shift. Everyone did it up and down the state. We all moved because it was the beginning of the student-centered funding formula, and we all shift to get that baseline funding. Fort, fortunate for all of us to do that because a little thing called COVID-19 came the very next year, and that funding continued for the next kind of three years and then for a bonus kind of two years after with an emergency conditions memo by the governor. So we were funded at that $10,700 number for a number of years, even though we saw our enrollment drop. Now we have the new funding floor where we're funded at what we're bringing in over that three-year average. And so it's super important that we're back there now and so, and trending upward. We want to continue to do that as we move forward.
And next slide, if you have any questions?
Yes, I have a question, Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman Kineman. Are dual enrollments, are they going to be considered, they're not considered FTEs?
They're included within, within those numbers. So yeah, dual enrollment, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so those are all included? And also, are non-credit sides are also included on FTEs?
Yes.
Okay, that's very good.
There's a different rate for them, but yes.
Different rate for each category, yes.
Each category.
Mm-hmm.
So sound me ignorant. We were in that meeting with the budget, with the, with the California Community College League, and they mentioned something for the '26 funding item that I'm, I just was very concerned. When you're showing me this, when it, in, I'm always thinking about the student in regards to the student. When they get financial aid, do we, this is so ignorant of me, but I don't know, and that's why I'm asking. The financial aid, when we get the financial aid from the federal government and the state, the Cal State, is that in our budget? Under what item is that? Is that restricted, restrictive? Or is that just completely not in this budget?
Well, financial aid is not necessarily included, but we do get funding based on all, every application that a student submits. We do get funding for that. But financial aid is not included in the SCIF formula, no.
It goes, yeah, it's coordinated for the student. It goes to the student and their piece. We get, we get, depending on how they qualify and depending on where they are, there's a cut of that percentage that we get kind of a bonus as part of the student-centered funding formula, depending on what category they're in. That's great because that serves us well because we have a very diverse population that's Pell-eligible. That, that gives us kind of some bonus money there. But no, it's not included within this budget.
So it's not included, okay, because I, we received something and I was just, they said that the president's budget process reduces the maximum Pell grant for the students for 20, 20, 27,000, it's usually 7,395 to 5,700. It's a 1,685 cut. The Senate and House Appropriation Committees in Sacramento have both voted to keep the maximum bell at 7,300 for the students. I'm, I'm just thinking about this.
Yes, for the students, so they might, there, there's, there's kind of less money that they have available to get on their side. So where they might have to carry additional portion of the costs here at the college.
So we're going to have to carry that, that's...
Yeah, yeah, so they have to come up with that cost, the difference in that cost.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you all.
I, I, yes.
So I'm just slightly confused on this part because if it's, if it's enrollment, I, I just think of it as like a person. So if, when there's a percentage there, I'm like, what, what does that mean? Is that just like in comparison to, for, for example, if someone's only taking like seven credits versus like full-time, is that like where the percentage would come in? Or am I like totally off?
Well, I mean, FTEs is, depending on, of course, you know, every student is different and not everybody's going to have a full load. But you know, FTEs is, it adds up the percentage of each student, which makes up one FTEs. So we, we tried to, and since we are positively trending with FTEs, we did an, an additional 3% for next year for, for FTEs. We, we've been positively trending. But yeah, if, if, let's just say that you take half, you know, it's a 12 credits. You take six, I take six, the two of us are going to make one FTEs. Yeah.
Good question.
Go ahead.
Any other comments, questions? Well, Director Guajaro, Vice President West, thank you very much again from the board. I was pleased to see the middle college status and the center status in there. That's exciting to see us returning to levels where we're going to be able to maintain that. And I really appreciate your presentation, and I'm sure my colleagues do as well. It was very clear and looking positive.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, we now will conduct a public hearing on the Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Final Budget. Following the public hearing, the board will vote to adopt the final budget for Fiscal Year 2025-2026. For the public hearing, each speaker is allowed a maximum of three minutes on the topic. 15 minutes shall be the maximum time allotment for public speakers on the subject, regardless of the number of speakers at any one board meeting. At the discretion of a majority of the board, these time limits may be extended. Would speakers and attendees who wish to address this item, please come forward, comment now in the chat field, or select the Raise Your Hand button to speak. And IT, will you please set a timer? Well, do we have any speakers? Okay, will you please set the timer for 30 seconds to allow speakers to come forward? They were ahead of me, good.
No one has raised their hand in the Zoom yet. I don't see anyone in the boardroom, at least not yet.
I'm going to wait a couple more seconds, I'll miss. Okay, having conducted the public hearing, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees vote to adopt the final budget for Fiscal Year 2025-2026. Do I have a motion to approve the item 13.01 as presented?
So moved.
Okay.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote, President Martinez Garcia.
Student trustee James?
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
Aye.
Trustee Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee Odin.
Aye.
Trustee Kineman.
Aye.
Item 13.02, resolution number 091925-1, authorized signatures. Do I have a motion to approve item 13.02 as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
13.02, right?
At 13.02, yes.
Got it.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? And this, President Garcia, this is the standard authorized signature that we do as, as people update and move into different positions. Is that correct?
Yes, it is correct.
Okay, great. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, President Martinez-Garcia.
Student trustee James.
Aye.
Trustee Sanchez Fulton.
Aye.
Trustee Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee Odin.
Aye.
Trustee Kineman.
Aye.
Item 13.03, 13.03, resolution number 0919925-2. Do I have a motion to approve change order number one with resolution number 091925-2 as presented?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, I would like to get an, that this is very important for the college. I just kind of want to get the person that handles our Roadrunner. This, it's very important to hear just a little brief update on this.
The Roadrunner Motors?
The, in, in regards to the construction cost account, what we're discussing, thank you.
I will call on VP West.
I believe that our, Robert Rousher is online and can answer specifically about this change order. Is he there?
He's coming.
Andy can provide an update on Roadrunner Motors, or I can.
I would love to get an update on Roadrunner. I think the community watching want to just get an idea where we're at and then just speak on both items. That would be great, thank you.
He's not there, I can jump in for sure.
Okay.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Robert.
There he is.
So good morning, President Martinez-Garcia, trustees, Chair Kineman. First, Roadrunner Motors is going great. We've had some interesting challenges out there, as you'd expect with any progress, any project of any side. But we're, we're making great progress. The specific change order on the table is related to some unanticipated material that was found underneath the site when we started excavation for the retaining walls and foundations. We believe it may have been deposited there in the past when the adjacent dam was constructed by, by Riverside County Flood Control. So that, basically huge chunks of concrete and stones, that material had to be excavated. And then in, in kind of a really nice green move, if you will, it's being ground up on site and being recycled to be used as part of the foundation material underneath the new building. So we actually kind of get a little benefit from this. And it's, it's got good synergy with our overriding goals to be sustainable stewards of the environment.
If I can just add here real quick, so Robert and Mac and their team were so proactive with this. This came about, about a month ago. They came forward and they said they did not want to delay the project. They did not want this to, to impact the timeline, to wait for today's board meeting. So we authorized them to move forward to get this moving so that it would not delay the time for the project. They were thoughtful about it as they brought it forward and brought through, brought forward options. So this work was progressing. And so this is a little bit on the back end for doing it. But we wanted to make sure that we didn't lose any momentum with Roadrunner Motors with this latest surprise that came about as they were excavating the site. So just some context there.
Thank you, VP West. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Just happy to see that it's moving along.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Just to make sure I understand properly. So this is just, is this the construction that's going on here on the Palm Desert campus? Or is this the one that's in Palm Springs?
This actually, one is a third one. This is in Cathedral City. And this is Roadrunner Motors. So I know it's a good question, very good question. So this is our new automotive, state-of-the-art automotive facility that will be in Cathedral City. So this is the third site, we're everywhere.
Oh, I just, I have to visit all of them.
It's a lot of dirt right now, but we'll, we'll have you visit, you can come anytime.
I'm going to have to put it on my schedule, I have a lot of commitments. But I'll, I'll, I'll put it on my list for sure. Thank you.
All right, any other questions, my colleagues? Discussion, okay, Robert, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Vice President West, thank you. We have a roll, we do have a motion and a second. Can we do a roll call vote, President Martinez-Garcia?
Student trustee James.
Aye.
Student trustee Sanchez Fulton.
Aye.
Trustee Meyer.
Aye.
Trustee Odin. Trustee Kineman.
Aye.
Question carried.
Okay, we are right at noon and we would be going into a study session at this time. If there's not any objections of the board, if we could move to item 17.01, closed session. And then we can also have an opportunity for our staff to go to lunch and then come back after closed session. And we'd be able to pick up with our open session just right after closed session. Is there any objections to that?
No objections.
Okay, great. So then we will recess to closed session. The live feed of this meeting will continue. Board members and President Martinez-Garcia, I ask you please join closed session at 12:15, 12:10, 12:10. Okay, 12:10, great, thank you.
Convened to open session at 1:10 PM. And during closed session, no action was taken by the Board of Trustees. We'll return now to item 14.01, the role of the board. And our presenter is Eileen O'Hare with Anderson with Eileen O'Hare Anderson with Lieber Cassie. I almost put you in the title of the firm there, Eileen.
But that would be okay with me. All right. Thank you, Trustee Kinnaman. It's wonderful to be in front of you and to present on this topic. I am mindful of that I am all but as standing between you and being able to adjourn. So we'll go as expeditiously as possible through the presentation. So first, I wanted to talk very briefly about a couple of board governance issues. The first is the Brown Act does not define a quorum. A quorum is a simple majority of the board. In this district, that means three trustees, you're a five-member board. Three trustees is a quorum. You may act only if there is a quorum present at your meeting. You may actually, you may only meet if there are three of your trustees. The next point is similar because the Education Code says we act by a majority of the entire board without regard to who's absent or who's not absent. You require three trustees to take any action. There are a few actions mostly to do with leases and other land use issues that require a supermajority. But in general, you need a simple majority to take any action. All right, looking then at the board roles and especially as those apply in the accreditation context. The board's structure within the district is that your elected officials, you are elected by the electorate. You compromise the Board of Trustees. You are the governing body for the district. You employ a superintendent president. In our case, it's Superintendent President Val Martinez Garcia. I'm having a little technical difficulties. Thank you. And the Superintendent President is responsible for the day-to-day operation of the district. You, as the board, are set at the policymaking level. The Superintendent President handles the day-to-day operational detail. Under the board policy as well as the accreditation standards, there are duties of the board that are set out in your board policy in Board Policy 2200. You are essentially a bridge between the community and the district. You are responsible to enable student success, to create an environment for successful performance by the district. The board is obligated to act as a whole. So once the board has made its decision, whatever it may be, even if you were not among the majority that that voted in a particular way. So if the Board were to enact a resolution that says Desert Community College District's official vegetable is broccoli, the Board as a whole supports that that declaration, even if you, quite rightly so, think broccoli is a horrible, horrible vegetable. You you support the decision of the Board because it's a proper, it's a democratically enacted declaration. Okay, you argued against broccoli, but you were not in the in the successful majority on that day. The Board's decision stands as the decision of the district. The Board's role in this is at policymaking levels. So you are representing the the interests of the community in establishing policies and setting standards. You hire and evaluate the Superintendent President. You delegate your power and authority to run the district, to make the operational day-to-day decisions. You delegate that to the district. One of your big responsibilities is to assure the fiscal and financial health and stability of the district and to monitor for institutional performance and educational quality and always to look to protect the district. A lot of that is echoed in the ACCJC accreditation standards. We've also adopted those into Board Policy 2430 on delegation of authority. You delegate authority to to do the day-to-day operation of the district. You delegate that authority to the Superintendent President. The Superintendent President may then delegate further. For instance, very common that the Superintendent President delegates further the responsibility for paying bills and warrants, accepting bids, processing warrants, paying paying bills as they come. Those are that responsibility is further delegated to the Vice President of Business Services or Administrative Services, as the case may be. But the Superintendent President stays responsible to you, the Board, for the for compliance with those responsibilities. And the Superintendent President is the professional advisor to the Board. You rely on the Superintendent President to help when there's a policy that isn't clear or something like that. You rely on the Superintendent President. The Board, as I've said, is responsible for policy, for policies to make sure that there is academic quality, academic integrity, and financial responsibility. We talked about the Board acts as a collective entity so that once the Board makes a decision, all trustees support that decision. And then another accreditation standard is that the Board adheres to its enacted policies and procedures for selecting the Superintendent President and evaluating properly evaluating the Superintendent President. We'll talk in a minute about the accreditation standards for for Board ethics. But there are other thoughts behind it besides the the Ethics and Conflict of Interest Policy. The Board delegates authority to the Superintendent President to implement its policies and procedures in this district and in fact, in every district that that I'm aware of in the state of California. That happens by way of administrative procedures. So the Board adopts a a policy that says broccoli is the official vegetable of the Desert Community College District and the College of the Desert. Then the Superintendent President adopts a procedure that says, okay, that means that we have broccoli on the menu in the cafeteria at least once a day or at least once at every meal or whatever. And it means that we, in our horticulture program, we encourage the faculty to enact curriculum that extols the virtue of broccoli. Whatever. It's it's the implementation of the broccoli policy is done through procedures. So we the Board delegates that authority to the Superintendent President. And then the Superintendent President is responsible to the Board for how that happens. And if at the end of the year or the end of the academic year, there's still no greater acceptance of broccoli, then that's something that the Board may be addressing with the Superintendent President during the superintendent's evaluation. The Board also has the responsibility to know and understand the accreditation process, which is complicated. I know full-time administrators who don't understand the accreditation process, but to understand the process and to know your accreditation status. And then we wanted to talk about the power of an individual trustee. So the Board acts only through a majority of the Board. So in my silly hypothetical I've been talking about where we declare broccoli the official vegetable, it takes a Board action to do that. It is to to be the official action of the district. We require a vote with at least three trustees voting to support that declaration. If one trustee goes rogue and decides to say, no, I refuse. I I say the official vegetable of the Desert Community College District is the acorn squash. That's not effective. The the Board acts only through a majority of the Board and a single trustee has no power on his, her, their own to establish an official action. The the official action is only what the majority has done. All right. So question?
Yes. What if you are a single Board member and you really like acorn squash and you think that it is the best? What positions do you take or can you take?
So you could advocate for acorn squash, and I'm with you because that's my, one of my favorite vegetables. You could advocate for acorn squash. You can talk about the culinary and nutritional advantages of acorn squash, but you can't do that. You can't say that you are acting for the the Board. You can't say, I am here to change it from broccoli to acorn squash. And you can't say broccoli sucks, even though you would be speaking truth. You can't say broccoli is a horrible vegetable and no one should eat it and it should not be the the official vegetable of the Desert Community College District.
A question. What happened if the broccoli you find out was a little spoiled prior? Let's say it was all burnt before something happened that you just got knowledge of and you do have the evidence of. But you find out, let's say you find out that little broccoli was lying. I don't know. No, I'm sorry. The little broccoli was burnt, fried or something. It was, I don't know.
So can I make a friendly amendment to your to your hypothetical? So let's say we find out that broccoli, we've never known this in in all the years that we've been eating broccoli, but we find out broccoli depletes calcium in in our bones. And so it is not good for us. You can do a couple of things. Probably the best thing to do in that circumstance would be to work with your Superintendent President to develop information, educational information for your trustees, but ultimately to bring that back before the trustees. And and talk to the trustees in open session in as an agendized item to say, look, in August of 2025, we voted to say broccoli is healthful and good for us and it's a local crop, whatever, and we we adopted it as the official vegetable of the the district. But since then, there have been studies that have come out that said it's not as healthy as we thought. For whatever reason, it depletes calcium, it deposits bad things and whatever. And I would like us to re to convene a study group or just to take a vote at the next possible opportunity to withdraw or rescind our declaration of broccoli being the official vegetable and to consider whether it should be acorn squash or carrots or whatever. And where you see this is where districts have been changing the names of their their mascots or they've been changing names on buildings because we've we've learned and grown and understand things differently now. And and that's how that proceeds is a trustee brings or or a community member brings something before the Board to to discuss, really, is broccoli where we want to go? And I I really want to thank the Board for for wholeheartedly getting behind my broccoli metaphor. I do not love broccoli. All right. So power of the power of a single trustee. So a single trustee cannot say acorn squash all day. Acorn squash is now it. It is now the official vegetable of the Desert Community College District. Broccoli can can, you know, go go by the wayside. It's now acorn squash. That's not something to that that one trustee can do. That takes an an act of the entire Board. All right. So I I have a case study for you. Trustee A enjoys attending district events and other community events. At a recent student theatrical performance, he spoke to the Faculty Association President at the break in the performance. The two discussed a pending grievance. Trustee A said he would speak to the Superintendent President in favor of the union's position on the grievance. Is that a problem?
Yes.
Yes.
Does anyone think that that is not a problem? Hearing none. There there are a number of problems in that scenario. I mean, first of all, what is, think about what what that is doing to your Superintendent President in your in the superintendent's ability to deal with the union president. Right? There's there's obviously an issue about you're undercutting, you're not properly supporting your Superintendent President. That also, not not to mention HR, it's also undercutting your HR in their ability to deal with this union president and maintain a relationship and take positions on things. You're you're teaching the union president that if they don't get what they want from administration, just to go to the trustees, that that will will get us, get us what we want. So there's that. But there's also an issue that you might be exposing the district to liability. I can, on the limited facts in front of us, not, it's not immediately apparent, but I can make a circumstance in my mind where this would be an unfair labor practice. What if we were talking about negotiations instead of a grievance? And one of the members of the Board of Trustees is undercutting the district's position in bargaining. That could be an unfair labor practice charge. And in any event, it is bad practice for governance. That is a bad thing to do for just from a governance standpoint. But there may be other obligations. All right. Let's change some facts. Imagine instead of trustee A saying he would speak to the Superintendent President in favor of the union's position, what if the trustee simply said he'd discuss the pending grievance with the Superintendent President? Just, I will talk to Val about this. Is that still a problem? Does that change your answer?
I I don't see a problem with that because there was no commitment on the trustee's part to take a side one way or the other, just bring it to the right place where it belonged.
So you're correct, Trustee Meyer, in that it doesn't commit, the trustee A did not commit to a particular course of action or making a particular argument or supporting a particular position. I would argue that I think there's still some problem there. The the trustee, the Board, the entire Board has delegated to the Superintendent President the right and the responsibility to address things like grievances. Now, the Superintendent President, as we said earlier, probably sir delegate, further delegates that to the Vice President of Human Resources. That's appropriate. But administration is responsible for the day-to-day operation. If the trustee gets too far into the weeds and saying, oh, let me talk about, let me talk to Val about this. The trustee is getting into operational detail and that could, if it's prolonged and over a period of time and repeated, that could result in a accreditation finding of micromanaging. So what I would have advised trustee A in this circumstance is, listen, thank the union president for bringing the matter to you. Thank them for their time and talking to you and their trust in in speaking to you frankly. And that's it. Stop right there. That doesn't preclude you from later going to the Superintendent President and saying, hey, I ran into so-and-so and we were talking about this. What's the real story? It doesn't keep you from going to the Superintendent President and asking about something. It doesn't cut off your ability to do that at all, but it maintains everyone in their proper lane. I think trustee A in this circumstance is still out of his or her lane. Okay. Let's take this a little bit further. We have another, we have another trustee. A doesn't quite get get his or her fill of talking to people yet. So trustee A leaves the theater production and goes to a reception at the city. While there, he speaks to the mayor and the City Public Works Director about a drainage issue at the northeast corner of the district's main campus. Trustee A says the district would recontour the drainage from the north parking lot to help alleviate the problem. This is not in the facilities plan. The district does not have the budget for this for this action.
Yes.
Why?
Because the trustee doesn't have the jurisdiction, doesn't have the authority to make that unless there's been a Board action that's been taken that they're just repeating. That really falls in the jurisdiction of the Superintendent President and his staff.
Hundred percent. The the a single trustee can't make commitments, any kind of commitments. Whether it's, let me say that better, can't make commitments on behalf of the district. So any kind of commitments, whether it's, we'll fix the drainage out of the north parking lot. I mean, I have all kinds of problems with that, partly because, you know, we don't give enough facts in this in this hypothetical. But do we know that the drainage problem is the result of something happening in the north parking lot? Is it our north parking lot? Are we sure that we own that north parking lot? Sometimes we rent parking. We lease it from nearby neighbors. Is it, has there has there been a problem? Is it, you know, we say a drainage problem, what is the drainage problem? Is the drainage problem, there's two inches of standing water when it's been pouring for two days? Or is the drainage problem, there's three feet of stand wa- standing water when it rains for five minutes? You know, what is the the drainage problem? Um in addition, you know, back to back to that same concept, a single trustee cannot commit on behalf of the district, and while I'm confident in the that the district would ultima- ultimately prevail if this were to e- escalate to some kind of a, an argument or a legal dispute, this could expose the district to liability, even if it's only the liability of having to to defend ourselves in a lawsuit.
Eileen, I I remember a training session I was in where when a conversation like that starts, your best an- answer is, how very interesting, and nothing else. Because even committing and saying, oh, I'll take that back to the district has now committed some sort of action on a district's part, and if you say, oh, I'll take it back to Chip at the district, that's committing that Chip will do something with it on behalf of the district.
Correct.
Even comment that, hey, I don't know anything about it, but I'll bring it up. That's committing.
A hundred percent, and I agree with you, your best response is to say, oh, thank you for bringing that to my attention. Or, isn't that, I like, isn't that interesting? Or, some other non-committal version of of that statement, a hundred, I a hundred percent agree. Even to say, let me look into it, is to imply that we're going to do something. And, to the extent that you say, let's take it back to Dr. West, now we've put Dr. West in a in a bad spot, because uh if he doesn't fi- finds out that there's nothing to be done, the drainage isn't our problem, in fact, it's the city's water that's draining onto our parking lot. Uh, that puts, that puts Chip in a bad spot, having to say no to the to the city after the trustee said, we'll look into that. All right, so I want to bring this on home by talking fairly briefly about um the board's statement of ethics. So one of the accreditation requirements is that the board have a statement of ethics. Um, and that the board specifically, that the board has a method for uh enforcing the statement of ethics. So the board's statement of ethics is founded, our Board Policy two seven one five. Uh, and your district does a really good job of keeping your board policies up to date, keeping them on the website and available to you as the board members, faculty, classified staff, students can all have access, community members all have uh access to your board policies. Uh, the uh, the district's BP two seven fifteen talks about what we've what we've talked about so far this morning, about uh establishing policy uh oversight, uh um the board sitting uh as an oversight body, uh emphasis on student learning, quality of student learning, um uh operational efficiency and fiscal stability, staying out of the weeds. Um, and en- enacting policies and procedures consistent with the district's mission. Uh, and it goes on, and I'm I'm going to move through this really quickly, because I know you've all looked at the at the board policy, uh maybe not in the last twenty minutes, but I know you've all, you're all generally familiar with it. Uh, that the board sticks at its uh to its uh high-level policymaking uh role, that it does not get into the operational detail, uh and that if it, if the board discovers issues, it brings those to the Superintendent President and not to uh the staff. So if someone complains to you, and I know this happens, if someone complains to you and you run into them at the grocery store that their student, their uh a parent says their student's financial aid is not correct, or someone complains about a grade, or somebody complains about the condition of the parking lots, or the lawns, or whatever, you don't take that to uh the Director of Financial Aid or the Director of A and R, you take that that question or that complaint to uh the Superintendent President and let the Superintendent President deal with it and figure out which which staff member needs to address it. Um the Board Policy two seven fifteen also talks about um having and es- establishing and maintaining a good working relationship between the board and the Superintendent President, that um both both parties work together uh in a professional and um uh supportive uh relationship. Uh, and that's important to the stability and um health of the district. Uh, it, the board policy also talks about trusteeship, uh that all trustees represent the entire district, not just those electors in their own district, uh s- their own uh trustee area, rather, everyone represents the entire uh board. Uh, the trustees should at all times uh avoid uh conflicts of interest, they don't use their position for personal gain, or even the appearance of personal gain, or some kind of perception of favoritism, or perception of animus towards um towards uh someone or some entity or group. Um, that the trustees work together to maintain good, good working relationship among themselves, that they uh keep an open mind when doing the business of the board, that they wait to make their decision until the board is together and hears the same uh message at the same time. Uh, and that the trustees uh develop uh uh a habit and a practice of attending, for at first, they attend all board meetings, and they review all materials before the board meeting and come prepared uh and ready to do the business at the district. Um, we've talked about this several times, they exercise power as a majority, uh that the trustees all uphold the decision of the board, once we've decided on broccoli, you can't speak against broccoli. Um and you, of course, comply with the Brown Act and other uh transparency laws such as Conflicts of Interest, Public Records Act, those kinds of things. Uh, that you keep uh information given to you in confidence, in confidence, pr- so this particularly applies to closed session, if you find out uh something from closed session, you maintain that information in confidence. Uh, applies to all, you know, you you learn student information from time to time in closed session, you certainly uh learn um per- personnel information, confidential personnel information during closed session, those those kinds of things you uh maintain in confidence. And then in the in the rare circumstance when there is a a breach, uh the that any allegation of a breach goes to the board president who conducts an investigation, uh a, as necessary, appoints an ad hoc committee to to help with that investigation, and uh the board, uh if there is a violation, has the ability to censure uh a trustee for for that violation. And that's um a requirement uh from the the accreditation requirements. Uh, there is uh the need to have uh both the statement of ethics and an enforcement mechanism in order for the ethics statement to to have any uh any teeth to be effective. And with that, uh if there are any questions from the board, I'm happy to take them, but thank you very much for your attention.
I think our student, James, has her hand up.
Awesome.
Hello.
Hi.
I just wanted to understand, like, what is the, ooh. Can you hear me like this?
Yes.
Okay, um, like, what's the difference between saying something on behalf of the district and then just, like, having an idea as a person, like, at what? And when do you know, like, when you're speaking from your role, or when you're just speaking as a person? Because I understand, like, these roles are very important and, like, they're a part of our lives, but it's, I just don't know when.
So it, it's the 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 difference is this.
Yeah.
Assume for a moment that I am a member of the board of the Desert Community College District, that I am uh on the on the Board of Trustees, and imagine also that uh the board, as silly as it sounds, actually did adopt a resolution that said broccoli is the official vegetable of Desert Community College District. That doesn't mean I have to like broccoli, which is a good thing, because that's never going to happen, but I don't have to like broccoli, I can still like acorn squash. But what I can't do is say the board never should have adopted broccoli, broccoli is a horrible vegetable, and no one in their right mind would eat broccoli. I s- I can, I can think those things, but when I'm appearing as a trustee uh at an event, I can't say those things. I can still say, I prefer acorn squash, but I can't argue against the decision that the board has already made.
Okay. So you can speak on acorn in that scenario, but you just can't say anything about broccoli? But you can say anything about acorn?
You can say whatever you want about acorn squash.
I don't want to, you know, I want to fully understand the boundaries.
Do you think maybe I, having an opinion, you're entitled to an opinion, but you cannot speak on behalf of the board's decision? That, is that how I'm understanding, Eileen?
Yes, that's a, that is a very good rephrasing. Better than I did, yes. Oh, you're you're cutting out, I'm very sorry, trustee Sanchez Fulton.
That clarifies, but your opinion, once a board makes a decision, I I don't, you don't talk about it, it's your, that's the board's, we already did it, it's collective, we, you can't change, you can procedure, you can, but you would have to get the whole majority of the board, is that correct, Eileen, if you?
Yes, that that if if we find out broccoli is bad for us at some later date, there's a process to bring the broccoli decision back before the board. But you still, until the board changes its mind, changes its action, the action of the board stands and you you support it, whether you're in the in the bro- pro broccoli or anti broccoli.
Okay, that that makes sense um for, like, if it's a decision that was already made, but what if you're just speaking to the community, it's just ideas, it's not anything that was already decided on, people are, you know, ri- random members of the community come up to the board to discuss something, not something already there? What's?
So you can discuss issues. Uh, the the thing you have to be careful about as a trustee is it it's hard for members of the community to distinguish between when you're having a a personal opinion and when you're speaking on behalf of the board. So you have to be very, very clear when you are speaking in your personal capacity and when you're speaking as a trustee.
And you have to be careful with your words, so the public doesn't construe it as a commitment of something. Because as five, as a group of five, we can commit. Okay, and the other thing is, in this, we, I was in a session in DC on this, and and the guy, I don't know, Mary Jane, you were sitting there, you weren't, i- i- the guy stood up and he says, okay, so the board voted three to two on something, and I was one of the two. And the question was, how do you present that to the public? He says, well, I tell them, the board decided this, but I personally didn't go along with it, and I want to protect my constituents in my area, so I'm opposed to it. Oh, this guy got shot down, not only by the presenter, but everybody in the room just kind of said, really? You you can't do that. If the board, say it's a split three to two, you have to say, okay, this is the decision of the board, and we're going with it. End of story.
But she said something prior, she, this hasn't been voted on, let's say, your district or heard the her students come up on items, and these are ideas, you would go directly to the superintendent. That, E- Eileen, is that right?
So, let's say, let's say.
Not a decision, I'm just saying, let's say, concerns from a community member, co- concerns from the student, concerns, um.
Or a good idea, even.
Good, I mean, we get ideas as elected officials and representatives from our district, because we are commu- all of us are community members, but we, I think what happens is, it's an ide- you could talk, but you just you could bring ideas, the superintendent, that's the only pers- basically, Eileen, am I right, is just, you you discuss that with the president, is that correct?
Yes, so if somebody comes to you and says, my grade this, my financial aid that, whatever, this is, this is a great program, why don't, why don't we have a program on uh broccoli farming? Take those to the Superintendent President. On the other hand, if, for instance, let's say we put broccoli on the agenda for the next board meeting, and people are coming up to you constantly and saying, broccoli is great, broccoli is great, broccoli is lousy, whatever, people are coming up to you to talk about broccoli. You can talk to them about broccoli, you can listen to them, as trustee Meyer said, listen to them and say, oh, that's interesting, or thank you for that information. If they're trying to sway your opinion, that's great, that's permitted, that's part of democracy. Uh, just, you don't uh, don't commit in a way that indicates um, first of all, that lea- you commit in a way that leaves you wiggle room to change your mind, and uh, don't, don't say anything that indicates it's a du- the decision has already been made, or the decision does not have a fair hearing before the board, or that that one side or the other is uh is bound to win.
Eileen, I have, I have a question. Culturally, as a Latina, we speak with our body, and I I nod, and I'm like, I'm listening to the person. I'm not agreeing, I'm listening and I'm giving that, I mean, I'm just, no, no, but I'm just saying, not everyone communicates the same way. Sometimes culturally, that's, I I have noticed, I mean, we have different cultures within every- everywhere. That that's a fine line, because you may be acknowledging the person, but you're, they assume that you're agreeing, you're just acknowledging. I mean, that's a fine line, that's, Eileen, could you speak on that, please?
Um, you're you're correct that um mu- actually, there are studies that show most of our communication is non-verbal. Uh, so yes, uh, it is, uh, it is true that that non-verbal cues, including things like uh eye gaze, hand motions, nodding is an excellent example. Um, i- it's it's difficult to to, it's a, it is a line, it is a line to walk to make sure that you are conveying interest and attention and not necessarily agreement.
And because of that fact, sometimes it's important to clarify before when that conversation is, you know, I I appreciate the fact that you shared this, and I listened to what you had to say. No commitment.
So, Eileen, I had a question under, you have a the board's statement of ethics, and it says, uh, maintain confidentiality, privileged information and closed session information. So, let's say the board has taken some action or is deliberating on some actions related to mit- contracts or personnel, and a trustee discloses that outside of the closed session. Can you Can you describe what that creates?
So, yes, it creates a lot of problems. So if someone breaches confidentiality from closed session or releases attorney-client privileged information. Uh that you got in, in, say in a memo or a letter. It, it will disadvantage the board, the, and the district uh in a number of ways. Um it could expose that individual trustee to unwanted attention from the grand jury. The district attorney. Um violating Brown Act is something that the district attorneys generally take very seriously. Um and there's a reason that information was in closed session in the first place. It was in closed session because we're trying to um uh communicate uh legal information to the, directly to the board. Or because we're trying to protect the privacy of an employee or a student. Uh and by violating that, you're really breaking trust both with your, your fellow trustees. But also with the person that you're discussing or the entity that you're discussing. And it's just not fair to the, to the people who are involved. In addition, there are lea- definitely significant legal consequences.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Um, let's say. I, I'm, I'm interested in what's going on on campus. So as a trustee. I just drop in and I, I wanna talk to students and see what their thoughts are. Is that appropriate?
I think it's alw- it's appropriate for a trustee to attend events. To go to per- student performances, to go to athletic contents, to contests. To go to um open meetings, uh things like that. We need to be careful for, of a couple of things. First of all, if we get. You know, being a small board has advantages and disadvantages. One of them is it only takes three of you to constitute a meeting. And if the three of you are meeting and there's no agenda posted, that's a Brown Act problem. So that's, we need to communicate with the, with the Superintendent President's office so they can monitor. When we get to three trustees going to an event. That's the first problem. Um and the second problem is. Try, I don't, sometimes especially new trustees don't fully appreciate. The pressure that having a trustee at an event adds. Right? Suddenly, uh you know, we've gone from just a, a. The, the jalapeno eating contest uh has gone from just being a fun student event. To being, now we've got a trustee or two trustees. Gee, do, do we, do we have enough jalapenos? What if the, what if the trustee wants to eat jalapenos too? You know, we, it becomes, it puts a lot more stress on, on staff to make sure the event. Is um staffed in a way that we might not otherwise staff it. Um and it puts, it adds pressure. We, we definitely want to see trustees um participating and attending uh appropriately, but. It's important that we communicate. That we communicate when that's going to happen, so we can watch for, for the unintended consequences.
Would, would you say, uh Eileen, that would go? To community events as well, where it's not necessarily. Uh related to the college or the district, but then someone shows up. Emphasizing their role as a trustee and instead of them just being another member of the community.
Yes, I do agree with that. Um so it may not be. A, a, a big deal if, if one or two of you go to. I'm gonna make things up now, go to the, to some city event, a groundbreaking or. A dedication ceremony or a, a kickoff for some whatever. Uh but if, if two of you attend as um just community members, that's, that's one thing. But if another, another trustee comes uh and is uh. Saying they're attending as a trustee of Desert Community College District, that may add. Um a different twist on things and could. Take us from the two to three uh members present to make us worry about. Brown Act even at another, at least think about uh the question of a Brown Act issue.
Thank you. Looking around at my colleagues on additional questions.
So let's pick a random event, whether it's on campus or off campus somewhere else. And three trustees or more attend. Pretty much as individuals. How do we avoid the um meeting slash Brown Act situation?
Well, certainly if it's something on campus, you can communicate through. The Superintendent President's Office. They'll, they'll know who's gonna be on campus, who's gonna be at what event. And it's not just on campus, who's gonna be at one event. There are exceptions that, that we can analyze. There are exceptions for uh ceremis, uh purely ceremonial occasions. Uh which is how we get away with the uh co- commencement. Uh and things like that, groundbreakings, things like that.
Uh ju- just pick a random. Uh meeting out, out in the community, um whether it be an organization such as even a service club. Or promiscuous someone, all of a sudden, three show up.
So a meeting is where three, in your case, three trustees show up. And here discuss or deliberate, that's the language of the code, here discuss or deliberate. On an item within your subject matter jurisdiction. So if you all show up, if three of you show up at uh the downtown noon rotary. I'm not too worried that you're gonna be hearing, discussing or deliberating on something within your subject matter jurisdiction. Unless it's uh Education Week or something, something like that. Um but we, it's still something we need to, we need to be aware of, because part of the problem with the Brown Act is. Not just the, the reality of a violation, but the public perception. And we need to be very um jealous of our reputation. And come in as a board that complies with the Brown Act.
Okay.
Yes, um when I was mayor, if that happened at some event in the community. We were instructed that someone should leave and we did that.
You can also make sure that you don't congregate. And, and talk only to each other. You can greet each other and, and say hello, but don't, don't huddle up. And don't talk about um district business while you're there.
But if you're looking at perception, even if you don't do that. People can assume that you will or that you are going to do it. So that's why we just said, you know, I'm out. One of us and it avoided it.
Five hundred people at an event. You have a trustee in the front, I mean, it's like a, let me, let me be very clear, a conference. There's thou- there's like eight hundred people. I, you know, that's the time when we, you know, the, the trustees, we go to a conference. We're learning. We're getting, we wanna do effective trustee ship from the California Community College League. Um to say, hey, can you, you know, we have to say, can, are you going to this workshop? And then we could talk. About the, the subject matter, because I wanna learn. I'm a lifelong, I, I mean, I, I mean, we're, we're going there to learn. We have, let's say, three trustees going to that conference and we wanna learn how that is on. For the benefit of the College of the Desert. So how, I mean.
There's an exception for conferences of that nature.
Okay.
Where it's a, uh, I don't have the, I don't have the Brown Act right in front of me, but there's an exception for conferences. Thank you.
So I, I'm gonna use another example. Let's say. An individual trustee shows up at something that maybe there's a fee to attend. And then they're not registered and they say, I'm here representing the district. And then they end up attending. Uh what situation does that put the district in?
So if there's only, so we're not, we're not worried about there being more than three trustees. You're just worried about the fact that someone has come and said. I'm here representing the district and gets in essentially free on that basis.
Potentially, or the district gets billed.
Or the district gets billed. Oh, yeah. If the district were to get billed, that could be a, a. A problem in the sense that there's a process in place. For trustees to get approval to attend conferences at district expense. Um and I can't pretend to tell you what that process is, but as I sit here. But there is a process for, for trustee development. Um and there's a budget for trustee development. Um so I would worry about those issues. Have we, have we gone outside our normal procurement processes? Um and have we exceeded our budget? Did we get proper approvals? Those are all issues that come up. Um and to the extent that somebody's. Trying to get a freebie, as it were. Um that, that worries me because it uh worries, that is of, of some concern because it. Uh could reflect negatively on the, the district's reputation. Oh, yeah, those, those people, the, the, that entity, their board tries to get into every conference for free. And that will negatively impact how the district is perceived in the community.
Thank you.
I have a question on that one then. So let's say you have a trustee, but then all the faculty are all there. Like ten people of, not in regards to board, but they, you, you. Let's say one of the speakers is somebody that you personally know and they invite you. And there, it's, it's having to do with the California Community College. They're, let's say.
Well, if, if you've been invited, then I'm not too worried about. Trying to get in for free because they've invited you to, to, to attend.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, I don't see any other questions, Eileen. Uh. Thank you so much once again for bringing your expertise to us and uh. Helping us understand more of the nuances of being uh the role of the trustees and a board.
Well, thank you very much for having me. I, I always enjoy talking to your board.
Eileen, I have a question. Chairman, uh, can I, um. Could we get, since we're covering board efficacy and ethics, do we get, could we add this? Because we all wanna get the, the training from our Board of Trustees and I found this so, so insightful. Is this part, can we put this part of training for, that's a question, I'm just a general question.
I can answer that, since I went through that. There is a section on there. I- if you go to CCLC events, there's credits. They'll tell you how many credits each session is. However, you can convert something like this. Hour or forty-five minutes, whatever, to the related credits, but you have to explain. You have to put details in there of what we were. Learning and training. And that's how I completed some of my sessions. This or ACCT uh or the webinar you and, and Ron recently went through might qualify. But if it's not a CCLC thing, you have to provide more detail.
Okay, thank you. So is this one we could put down? Eileen, because you give workshops on this, so.
Yes, this. I put things like this down and they've taken them.
Thank you.
And I think it's fortunate that we've got the PowerPoint presentation and a video of it too, to help support uh. As we do that. Okay, great.
Oh, Eileen, one more question. Um you know how trustees, I'm a new trustee along with, um. We did an ethics training. I, I don't know if um, we were in DC, it was, and we got a certificate from the law firm. Uh I think it was at. ACCT. Do we have to do that every four years, every two years? How does that work? I got that little certificate. From when you attended.
The requirement for ethics training is two hours every two years for Community College District Trustees.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, I think that concludes our study session and uh, Eileen, again, thank you. We're in between you and your weekend and so uh we'll go ahead and move through the agenda.
Awesome. Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Eileen. Thank you.
Uh, the president would like to ask.
Yeah, just for the public's awareness, this training was part of our efforts. To comply with ACCJC's requirements. It's our ongoing training for the board. And so we'll be documenting this accordingly. And also, I think uh from our new committee, I think Mark wanted to speak real fast. Regarding the, the certificate.
I think I mentioned it in my report earlier. But you're talking about the CCLC certificate? Yeah, you can go online to CCLC. If you want the, the, the link, let me know and I'll send you the link and you just sign up. It was three hundred ninety-five dollars, which is reimbursable by the college. I know I got reimbursed. And um it's just walk you through the whole, whole thing.
We really appreciate it, Eileen, and everyone's participation, participation today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for putting it together for us. Okay, at this time, we will move into item fifteen point oh one. Request to address the Board of Trustees regarding matters not on the agenda. Remote public participation is allowed and will be accepted in person by email to otp@collegeofthedesert.edu. During the meeting and submitted for the record or by using the raise your hand function by joining the Zoom link. Pursuant to District Administrative Procedure twenty-three forty-five, each speaker will be allowed a maximum of three minutes per topic. Fifteen minutes shall be the maximum time allotment for public speakers on any one subject, regardless of the number of speakers. At any one board meeting. At the discretion of, of the majority of the board, these limits may be extended. All comments must be submitted or brought forward prior to the end of the public comments section. As an additional note, this item is intended for members of the public who wish to speak regarding matters not related to the agenda. Uh Jeff, do we have any comments that we received?
I have no comments that have been brought forward.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move to sixteen point oh one where we. If there's anything on the, that we would like uh brought forward as a future agenda item. Uh that it's an opportunity for our trustees to uh add those to the list and we'll start with our student trustee James.
Okay, for the future agenda, um one of the biggest events. In the next couple of weeks is going to be Club Rush, which will be on September thirtieth from eleven to two at our Palm Desert Campus. And October first from eleven to two at our Indio Campus. This event is a fun, interactive way for all students to learn about our clubs, um explore new interests and join. We also have the Transfer Fair um that is going to be on the twenty-ninth of September. Where um most of the CSU colleges will be present and you can. where, um, most of the CSU colleges will be present and you can, uh, apply and be accepted that same day. Uh, so next week, next month will be fun also with Halloween events and we will continue collaborating. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Sanchez Fulton.
I just would, I really always do the push for the athletic. I would like something easier, um, maybe on our website, just something on the agenda. I'd like to get, um, a briefing on our athletics, what's going on. I want to see the volleyball, I want to see the students, our collegiate athletic department is so, um, I, I would love to get an update, what's going on? How are we doing with the Road Runners? I think that's number one, I, um, the communities, you know, we want to, two, um, I was, I just want to publicly thank, um, I believe the faculty had a flex program on mindfulness and thank you Veronica and I believe Wendy did that. I think it's wonderful, I kind of want to know an update, do we have it just for faculty? We just have it for students? Is it classified? Just the, something that I've requested several months ago, where are we at? Is it possible to have something, um, for that? And third and most importantly, I would love to see one of our, um, mobile, uh, one of our meetings, maybe in Indio, maybe in Desert Hot Springs, just, I would love to see it in our communities and other than here in Palm Desert, it would be lovely. So we could go to the other communities, thank you, that's it.
Thank you. Trustee Meyer?
I have nothing at this time, thank you.
Uh, trustee Oden?
Yes, I'd just, um, like to investigate the opportunity for the air traffic controller as a possible program for us, thank you.
Thank you. And I have nothing at this time. And, uh, so I will now adjourn the regular meeting of the Desert Community College District Board of Trustees at two seventeen PM, thank you.